Are you better?
I am much better, yes, thank you.
That's good.
It's a weird percentage because I still can't like walk around the block.
Really?
But I'm able to work, which is very good. I'm glad for that.
Right.
Oh, hello, Mr. Oberg. Okay, why don't we, why don't we start off, Mr. Page?
I moved at the Alamo County Public School Board, go into a closed meeting as authorized by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section two dash two thirty seven eleven A of the Code of Virginia, under subsection one for the discussion, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, and the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public offices, appointees, or employees of any public body.
Do you have a second?
Second?
Before we go, the link doesn't work.
The other one?
Are you using the one that I sent yesterday?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it says it's an invalid passcode.
Okay, that one worked for me. The other one, I didn't try.
Okay, let me, I can send you a new one.
Okay.
If you can hang on just for a second.
Okay.
Do we have to get out of this and then get into the other one?
Right.
Okay.
Yes. We can go anytime.
Okay.
We'll just meet up over on the other side.
Okay.
That sounds ominous. Get on the other side, everybody.
You're right, exactly.
Do you want to do the motion, the roll call? Looks like everybody left.
Oh.
Case stuff take the vote, right?
Yeah, there was a motion to go into closed session, but...
Do we have a quorum?
No.
We don't, um... Let me call somebody. I am calling you on purpose. Judy and Katrina and I are still in the public meeting. We did not vote to go into closed session. So with, with you saying it loudly, as I put you on speakerphone.
Okay.
Jennifer is going to take the role and we'll go with that.
Okey doke.
Ms. Johnston?
Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay.
We have Dr. Acuff on the phone.
Yeah, my computer is glitching. Ms. Lee?
Yes?
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes. Thank you, Kate. Thank you, everybody. We'll see you there. Okay.
For the slide show, since I own it, you want, are you, will you just screen share with me? Is that how we should do that?
We should be able to share already.
Okay, let me check. It says that I cannot start. Oh, well, you're because you're so you'll unshare and then I'll be able to share.
Yes, that should be right.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Michelle, I've got a little bit of a sore throat. Do you think you could just take the calendar item for me tonight?
Very funny, Patrick. Be happy to if I need to, but I know how much you love it.
Mindy, Rob and Christie, if you guys can just stop your video until it's time on the meeting.
And then I'll just be sharing my screen on the green button when it's my turn with your.
Correct.
Thank you.
Are all the board members here at this point? One, two, three, four.
Let's see, Dave.
Looks like we're missing Dave.
Okay. You know, over in the other, in the closed meeting, I, all of a sudden, the screen froze while Matt was talking. And I was the only one who moved on my screen. And everybody else was in suspended. It's like.
It was the opposite for us. You were frozen and we were, we, we thought you left us because you were frozen.
Okay. Is Mr. Ober with us?
Not yet.
Okay. And I'm waiting for Mr. Ober because he's going to give us the motion coming out of closed meeting.
Is Graham going to do that?
What's that?
Oh, no, Graham's going to make the other motion. I'm sorry.
Yeah, Graham, why don't you make the motion to bring us out and then Dave will make the motion.
There he is.
There he is.
Okay, great. Okay, Mr. Page.
I move that the board certify by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business, business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed or considered in the closed meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Johnston.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Ober?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes. Okay, the motion passes. Mr. Ober, would you make a motion based on what we heard in the, in the closed session?
I move that we appoint for the school year 2020 through 2021, the administrators provided to us in closed session.
Have a second.
Second.
Motion, motion and a second. Miss, Ms. Johnston.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Ober?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes. Very good. The motion passes. I call to order this regular board meeting for the Albemarle County School Board for June 11th. May we just take a moment of silence, please? Thank you. We could do a microphone check. Mr. Page?
Graham Page, Samuel Milla District.
Mrs. Carlson?
Katrina Carlson, Rye District.
Dr. Acuff?
Kate Acuff, Jack Jewitt District.
Ms. Lee?
Judy Lee, Rivanna District.
Ms. Osborne?
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
Mr. Ober?
Dave Ober, Whitehall Magisterial District.
Thank you. I am Dr. Hawes.
Matt Hawes, Superintendent.
Ms. Collins?
Debbie Collins, Deputy Superintendent.
Dr. Kaiser?
Dr. Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent.
Dr. Harrison?
Bernard Hairston, Assistant Superintendent.
Dr. McLaughlin?
Patrick McLaughlin, Chief of Strategic Planning.
Dr. Diggs?
Christine Diggs, Chief Technology Officer.
Mr. Jeramita?
Bill Jeramita, Strategic Communications Officer.
Mr. Holden?
Ross Holden, School Board Attorney.
And Mrs. Schmidt?
Rosalyn Schmidt, Chief Operating Officer.
Thank you, everybody. Just a statement for the record, and for the minutes of this meeting should so reflect that the meeting is being held electronically pursuant to Virginia state law and Albemarle County ordinance because the COVID-19 pandemic makes it impracticable and unsafe to assemble a quorum physically in a single location. Also, the meeting is being streamed live on the Albemarle County Public Schools website. And public comment may be offered through the Zoom waiting room feature in accordance with the school board's protocol or by written submission. in accordance with the school board's protocol or by written submission. And with that, our first order of business is to approve the agenda. May I have a, a motion to approve the agenda?
So.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Ms. Johnston?
Oh, wait, I do have a discussion piece, Jana. Were we gonna add in discussion about the SROs?
That's gonna be, that is, is planned to take place in section 9.0.
Oh, I didn't see that. We had updated it since she said that.
So sorry, yeah.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff? Yes. Mr. Ober?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes. The motion passes. Next up is the approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion and a second for the consent agenda to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and, and a second to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, may I ask that we pull the, the Cruz Elementary just for discussion?
Yes. Any other discussion? Mr. Ober?
I just wanted to, to recognize that some of the, the proximity of the property owners are, I think understandably unhappy that they're sort of not included and I, I, I I know that that was not staff's intention. The COVID-19 pandemic is certainly a, a different challenge. And I understand that, you know, that a couple of people have asked, hey, can you delay this 60 days? My understanding is that we, we really can't from a timing standpoint. I would ask, Ms. Schmidt, could we, could we delay it a week so that we could at least allow the, the people who found out about it to give some input?
Yes, I think a week is a reasonable extension. So if I understand, we would bring it again on the special meeting on the 18th.
Is that satisfactory, Mr. Ober?
That would make me more comfortable, guys.
Any concerns about that from the board? Okay. We have a motion to pass the consent agenda and a second. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Johnston?
Mr. Chair, can I make a point where that it's the agenda as amended?
Thank you. So, so correct it.
Dr. Acuff?
Dr. Acuff? I think that's a yes.
I second, I second the amended motion. And I also, but yes.
Mr. Ober?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes. Okay, the consent agenda as amended passes. And just making a note. Okay, our next item is a public comment. Mr. Page?
The school board invites and actively seeks the public's input in the matters relevant to school boards governance and provides for time doing its business meeting to hear from Albemarle County residents and community members. During public comment, we expect respectful and on topic comments. As authorized bar ordinance of the county of Albemarle, the school board will hold its meetings electronically during the COVID-19 pandemic. The school board is nevertheless committed to encouraging public comment despite its need to meet on a virtual basis. For this reason, there will be two ways for the public to comment during this time span. First, we will be receiving written comments that can be sent to the school board clerk. Secondly, the board, members of the public wishing to provide public comments during the school board meetings may sign up online at our website at 4 o'clock PM the day before the meeting. 4 o'clock PM the day before the meeting. The clerk will email Zoom links to the speakers on the day of the meeting so that they can log into the meeting to provide comment. Before electronic public comment commences, the vice chair will announce the order in which the speakers will comment. Public commenters will initially be admitted to a waiting room area on Zoom until it's their turn to speak. They will be able to hear the meeting in progress while they wait. Each speaker's access to public comment will be activated when it is their turn to speak. Speakers will be notified when they reach the two minute mark. And at the three minute mark, the speaker's Zoom link will be automatically deactivated. Although the school board, although the school board is confident that public comment will proceed in an orderly and respectful manner. Upon instructions from the chair, the clerk has the ability, ability to disconnect a speaker who is disruptive, profane, or fails to abide by these guidelines for orderly and productive discourse. Speakers during the meeting or those submitting written comment should state name and address or magisterial district. Simplest stating Albemarle County is not adequate. Although the school board will not respond to comments made during the public comment period, school board members may address comments at the end of the meeting agenda under other business. Tonight, we have five speakers and our first speaker is Amanda Moxom. Mrs. Moxom. Is Mrs. Moxom available?
She's there. She's just not showing.
Okay. Why don't we come, why don't?
I'm here.
Okay.
I'm here. Sorry, I'm having issues with the tech between the live stream on the laptop and my computer.
Okay.
Um. All right. Is there a timer? I'm trying to figure out what's happening here. Did I just go ahead?
Yes, please.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Amanda Moxom. I'm with the Ryo District. Part of being an anti-racist school and community is continually assessing the internal thought patterns and mindsets to which you subscribe. An absolute requirement of being an anti-racist is to learn and unlearn the ways in which you are not only complicit, but also how you can take actionable steps to dismantle white supremacy in all of the structures and organizations in which you exist. Here are three of the ways in which ACPS continues to be fully and intentionally racist. The school renaming process. I'm appalled at the complete whitewashing of what you have allowed within the school renaming process. When we say our school system is anti-racist, that means we take intentional actions to de-center whiteness and center the lived experiences of Black people in our community. Launching the renaming process in a way that eliminates and dishonors all schools named after Black educators is one way in which you have allowed for white supremacy to be perpetuated. In addition, every meeting that has been offered to the public has provided zero reflection, zero research, and zero alignment to anything within the anti-racism school's policy. Secondly, ignoring calls for an official policy ban on Confederate and white national, nationalist imagery. Franklin County school system just voted, actually back in January, not to ban the Confederate imagery. Then they have just voted to reverse that decision because they understand the imminent danger of it. In addition, NASCAR, as well as the US Marines, just banned the imagery as well within the last couple of weeks. I'm questioning what more insight do you need? What more proof do you need other than every organization within this country recognizing that it's problematic? Thirdly, and I think most relevant for today, is that you have now doubled down on your support of policing in schools. Where you put your money is directly tied to your core values and it continues to harm. The police continue to harm by their mere presence. The safety and security of children and families in our school system is of the utmost importance and SROs do not belong in our schools. I'm shocked that you would choose to invest more money and more resources from the school system to try to train already racist cops to be less racist. That is not how anti-racism works. You will never have the local data that you want. Working off of a school climate report from 2018 is completely blind to the real and present danger. I'm really questioning who on this school board is actually willing to step up and challenge white supremacy to dismantle racism in our schools. As of today, you have not completed your actions to become an anti-racist school system and it's unacceptable. And there's more talk than action and your talk is serving to continually refor, reinforce white supremacist ideals. Every single communication you put out does just, just that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Moxom. Our next speaker is Matthew Christensen. Mr. Christensen?
Hello?
Hello? Hello, Mr. Christensen?
Hi, um. My name is Matthew Christensen. I'm in the Ryo District. I second Ms. Moxom's statements regarding concerns about the prevalence or the permission of Confederate imagery within our school system. The fact that such organizations as NASCAR have even stepped up to ban Confederate imagery kind of leaves you guys looking like you're more conservative than NASCAR, which I don't know if that's a look that you guys really want to present for Albemarle County Public Schools. And regarding the school resource officers, I've read through the report, the statement that you guys put out. And we're not interested in a revise, revising the MOU with Albemarle County Public, Albemarle County Police Officers. We're interested in seeing it ended. The, I was listening to the board of supervisors meeting last week and was very concerned when the chief of police gave a statement in which he said that all of their policing is done 100% without bias. And he emphasized that. I don't know anyone who can do that job without bias. It's impossible. And the data shows that. And for the chief of police to say, oh, no, no one in my, my staff, none of my officers have any bias at all whatsoever. Even one iota shows me that he has absolutely no self-awareness or he's a flat-out liar. So, looking at your guys' suggestions for a revised MOU, you talk about it needing to be more educational rather than an officer in uniform. And if we're looking about education, I don't know why we're not focusing on teachers. And if we're looking on support for students, we should be looking at counselors, not cops. Police officers are not designed and trained to teach students. They are not designed and trained to be mental health counselors. That is not their job. That is not their purpose. That is not their training. If you're going to bring someone in, bring in a counselor, bring in a therapist, bring in additional student support staff. Don't bring in a police officer that you're gonna then try to maybe get the right training so that they can shoehorn into a job. Find someone who actually knows how to do the job, has been trained to do the job, and has the skills to do the job. You bring in more social workers, bring in more counselors, more therapists. This is what we need. We need more teachers to educate, not cops to educate. That's not their job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Christensen. Our third speaker is Doug Low. Mr. Low?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Doug Low. I'm actually wanting to comment about the Cruz Elementary School expansion. My wife and I, we live in the Whitehall Magisterial District and we own the property that shares a boundary to the south side of the school divided by Pear Branch Stream. We, we share about a 500 plus square, 500 foot boundary. I appreciate. Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So. Hold on just a second.
Ms. Johnston, can we hold the clock? It should be around 30 seconds.
Mr. Chair, as a, as a, as a point of, of privilege, we might going forward want to let people know that there is some sort of delay between the live stream and the, and I mean, it doesn't seem like it's long, but it looks like it's five, six seconds. I think that's messing with.
I agree. Okay, thank you. Please, Mr. Low.
Can you hear us, Mr. Low?
Ms. Johnston, could we hold the clock?
I'm not sure if you can still hear me, but I'll continue on.
Now we can.
And are you listening to some feedback or something?
Unfortunately, I'm having some kind of technical difficulty here.
Okay.
I'll just have to resume it at a different time.
Oh. Did he leave?
He did. Ms. Johnston, is he still in the, in the waiting room?
Um, no.
Okay.
All right, next. Yeah, he said he'd try to come back at some time. All right, the next person is Joanne Robinson. This is Robinson.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Low is back in the waiting room. Do you want me to go back to him after Ms. Robertson?
Yes, that would be great. Thank you. Is that all right with you, Mr. Page?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Robertson is there.
Okay.
Ms. Robertson, you can begin your statement.
Can you hear us, Mrs. Robinson? Ms. Johnson, do you still see her in the rating, waiting room?
No, she's not in the waiting room. She's actually in the meeting. And she's not muted.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Robinson, you may begin your statement. This is Robinson.
Would you like me to go to Mr. Lowe?
Why don't we go back to Mr. Lowe and see if Ms. Robinson can, can pick up after him?
All right, there he is. Mr. Lowe, you can begin your comment.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I think the confusion was on my end. Anyway, I'm writing, I'm, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I basically wanted to talk about the Croze Elementary School expansion. As I said previously, I have about a 500-foot border between our property and the school. And I appreciate that Mr. Oberg asked for a delay. I would like to see it a little bit longer, but we'll take what we can get.
Please keep speaking, Mr. Lowe.
Yeah, Mr. Lowe, because we can hear you. You might be delayed.
What I wanted to do was to point out that I think that there was, there were some communications, mostly as I understand, with parents in the school about ideas for the school. But to the best of my knowledge, there was no proactive notification to the adjoining landowners and nearby neighbors. So I appreciate any delay we could have in looking at this so that many of the neighbors could get caught up on what's going on with this. I have a number of concerns, but first of all, I just wanted to ask for a delay, and we'll get caught up and we'll try to give as much input as we can. My second main point, I have several points, but second main point is that, as I've, I've talked to the architect and to Almarle County staff, and the project gets, the building footprint gets about three feet outside of the stream buffer of Parrot Branch. And the, in speaking to both sources there, it seems that it would be necessary to have the construction work occur in the stream buffer during the course of construction. I am troubled by that situation. When you have 21 acres of land, it seems like there ought to be a way to not have to be working in the stream buffer. And in fact, I think I'm fairly familiar with the stream buffer ordinance, and there are exceptions that would allow something to occur in a stream buffer, but this project doesn't seem to meet any of those exceptions from my understanding of the ordinance. I, I think I would ask, as you move forward with the plan, whether you stay with this schematic or a different one, that I would ask the school board to direct the staff and the design team to not only stay out of the stream buffer with the footprint of the building, but also with the construction process. So that I would think that it needs to be pushed over, adjusted in some way, or think of a different way, but please don't work in the stream buffer. That's all I had for tonight.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Lowe, and we are sorry for the difficulties you experienced. Our next speaker is Mrs. Robinson again.
Just in case there is some feedback, would all the board members make sure that they are muted?
Hi.
Ms. Robertson?
Oh, yes, yes, sorry. It's me.
Go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm a little three-year-old with me. I'm so sorry, but that's the way it's kind of ended up tonight. Okay, I just would like to call, talk about the issue of SROs in the school system in Almarle. And I'd like to point out, I'm an anti-bullying advocate in Charlottesville and Almarle. I have my own anti-bullying organization called Stand for the Silent Almarle. And my, both my children went to do it and then Almarle High School. So I just wanted to point out that there was a time where there was intense bullying with both my kids, but the one that I'd like to talk about is how it was handled at Do It with my daughter. So they had an excellent team. This is when Catherine Baylor was there at handling situations when even bullying got intense. And they didn't bring a SRO in, but what they did was they had a type of system where they took my daughter and the other girl before it got intense, and they actually allowed them to talk with one another and work it out. And it's a situation that if it wasn't, like if it wasn't addressed when it did, it had the chance of escalating into something really, really big, which other people were brought into it, and it could have led to a really bad situation where one of the girls could have gone to the courts or to juvie. And the reason why I know this is before we moved to the county, we lived in the city, and there was a bullying incident there that we received no support. The only support that we got was from the security, the SRO, I think it was Officer Shiffler, and it was a horrid situation, just horrid. So what I'm trying to say is that we need more programs in the schools that, where there's people that can intervene on situations and help these kids work things out and build relationships and build social skills and emotional skills, rather than bring, automatically bringing someone in that's going to have punitive damages to something that if you had more people in the schools, if you had more of a type of atmosphere where kids could work things out. I mean, it's really amazing. The difference is amazing. So I'm just encouraging you.
Mrs. Robinson, I'm sorry, but your time is up. If you have other comments, you can send a written statement.
Use the model of social emotional learning, then punitive damages in the public schools. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Our last speaker tonight is Vernon Lecty. Mr. Lecty.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Fantastic. No problem. I'll just go ahead and get started. My name is Vernon Lecty, and I'm a teacher at Almarle High School. I'm formerly a voter in the Jack Jewett District, but have recently changed my voter registration to the city of Charlottesville. I would like to thank the Central Office, the School Board, and all the staff on the Back to School Task Forces for all their hard work in ensuring that everyone is safe and healthy when schools eventually reopen. I know many of the changes that will be made to accommodate for the pandemic of COVID-19 are currently being discussed. On May 19th, the CDC released recommendations that encourages schools follow in order to make sure students, staff, and all families are at minimal risk of contracting this disease. I've looked through the CDC recommendations many times. Since these recommendations have been released, many who work in education have been wondering how it would be possible to abide by all their recommendations. In order to follow what the CDC says is necessary to limit this pandemic, schools will need far more funding to adequately implement these changes. Some of the key features of the CDC recommendations include the ability to screen students and employees upon arrival for symptoms and history of exposure, intensified cleaning, disinfection, and ventilation, encouraging social distancing through increased spacing in classrooms and school buses, smaller groups, and limited mixing between groups. We also needed to teach a reinforced use of cloth-based coverings. The CDC says that cloth-based coverings are most essential in times when physical distancing is difficult. My question for the school division is if we are unable to implement the recommendations due to a lack of funding, would Almarle County Public Schools simply ignore some of these considerations made by the CDC because they're not feasible? After the guidelines were published, there's been enormous criticism from superintendents, administrators, bus drivers, and educators throughout the country. Most criticism comes from the fact that due to strained budgets, how will school divisions be able to afford the unprecedented changes that must be made to meet the safety recommendations for the sudden, for disease control? We're in the middle of pandemic. The health of our students, staff, and families should be our top priority. I will echo the response of Tina Williams, the president of the Fairfax County Federation of Teachers, who wrote, "Until there is a proven vaccine and all students and staff are immunized, there must be resources and infrastructure in place for screening, testing, contact tracing, and isolating new cases, and there must be significant public health tools to prevent the virus from spreading," end quote. I encourage the school division to continue to do all it can to make sure we are fully able to implement the necessary safety protocols. The lives of our community are in your hands. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lecty. Thank you for your comments. And this ends our public comment.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Page. Next up is Spotlight on Education, and always a spotlight, Mr. Oberg.
Just give me a second. Am I on now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm not good with technology. I apologize, guys. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, I have the privilege of leading two celebrations of excellence. Over the past, past several weeks, with school buildings closed and the resources limited, we have been reminded of the irreplaceable contributions by the professionals in our school division who serve children and families. While the public health provisions currently in place have complicated how these services have been delivered, they have not diminished their need or value, nor the passion or ingenuity with which they have been delivered. This certainly has been true these past few months, but how about for those for whom this has been true for more than 40 years? I'd like to ask Assistant Superintendent Dr. Claire Kaiser to help us recognize 64 of our employees who are retiring this year. One-fourth have served our community with distinction for 30 or more years, including three whose careers have spanned more than 40 years. Dr. Kaiser.
Thank you very much, Mr. Oberg. Let me shake, do a screen share with you all. It is my pleasure tonight, and it's really quite bittersweet always at this time of the year, when we get together and we recognize the people who have, who have decided that they are going to retire. The, the 64 people that Mr. Oberg mentioned are people that have made great contributions to our school division, and our students and our staffs and our schools and our community are better because of them. Tonight, we have invited them to listen to our livestream as they see their, the slides and we mention their name and their years of service. I will, I will state what those are, and you'll also notice on each slide, a comment that was made from a supervisor, colleague, or, or somebody else who has worked very closely with them. The slide deck will be updated as other, others of our employees decide to jump into retirement, and we will also be posting it on our main school division website. So without any further ado, I would like to congratulate and recognize the following people. Charles Adams, Lead Custodian at Stone Robinson for 24 years of service. Sorry. Barb Albertson, Teacher at Croze, 34 years of service. Dennis Barberio, Teacher, Western Almarle, 19 years of service. Pat Boudreau, Teaching Assistant, Red Hill Elementary, 28 years of service. June Benoit, Teacher at Meriwether Lewis, 28 years of service. Glenn Bernhardt, Teacher, Hollymead Elementary, 20 years, 28 years of service. Deborah Blackwell, Food Service Associate at Almarle High School, 18 years of service. Judy Blakely, Bright Stars at Woodbrook, 21 years of service. Tina Bolin, Teacher at Red Hill Elementary, 28 years of service. Tamara Bowden, Teacher at Henley Middle School, 19 years of service. Tracy Brooks, General at Human Resources, 13 years. Leslie Brown, Office Associate at Western Almarle, 37 years of service. Tony Bruno, A Courier with Building Services, he's been with us for seven years. Denise Campbell, Teacher at Agner Hert, 31 years. Sue Chikatelli, Autism Assistant at Hollymead Elementary, 32 years of service. Mary Clark, one of our bus drivers from Scottsville, she's been with us for 18 years. Jenny Coleman, Teacher at Kail, 31 years of service. Fay Cunningham, Teacher at Almarle High School, 43 years of service. Debbie Davis, Office Associate, Western Almarle, 24 years with the county. Bird Durking, 25 years of service, she's currently a teacher at Red Hill. Curtis Dow, A Bus Driver at Meriwether Lewis, 22 years of service. Ginny Elgort, Counselor at Murray and the Community Charter School, 19 years. Becky Ellis, Instructional Coach, 11 years of service. Christine Erskine, Special Ed. Teaching Assistant at Stone Robinson, 12 years of service. Terry Gallagher, Teacher at Hollymead Elementary, 19 years of service. Dusty Garwood, Special Ed. Assistant at Post High, 13 years of service. Linda Goolsby, Special Ed. Assistant, Western Almarle High School, she's been with us for 30 years. Gloria Green, Teaching Assistant, Western Almarle. Gloria Green, Teaching Assistant, Western Albemarle, 19 years of service. Susan Grant, Library Media Specialist at Henley, 38 years of service. Joanne Harris Birch, Teaching Assistant at Monticello, 20 years of service. Debbie Hagek, Nurse at Crozay, 10 years of service. Jeff Haslett, Teacher at Baker Butler, 31 years with Albemarle County. Skip Hudgens, Teacher at Cale Elementary, 40 years of service. Fay Jones, Office Associate at Brownsville, she's been with us for 39 years. Ashby Kindler, from our leadership team, 20 years with the county. Joe Coleman, Teacher at Hollymead, 30 years of service. James Lewis, Custodian at Henley Middle, he's been with us for eight years. Brenda Lilly, Autism Assistant at Cale, 27 years with Albemarle County Schools. Kathy Mallory-Chavers, Teacher at Agnor Hurt, she's been with us for 32 years. Beth Morris, Teaching Assistant at Hollymead, 38 years of service. Greg Maynard, a Teacher at Albemarle High School, 37 years with the school division. Donna McCracken, Teacher at Agnor Hurt, 22 years of service. Jack McMillan, also at Agnor Hurt, Teacher there, 34 years with the school division. Julie Mendelson, Nurse at Red Hill, 19 years. Melanie Menefee, Office Associate at Albemarle, 21 years of service. Chuck Miller, Teacher at Henley, 40 years of service. Debbie Newman, a Teacher at Baker Butler, 30 years of service. Patty Parmeter, Teacher at Sutherland Middle School, 18 years of service. Tino Perez, Custodial Team Leader at Stone Robinson, 14 years of service. Sharon Rush Ayers, Office Associate at Scottsville, 28 years of service. Kathy Russo, Teaching Assistant at Scottsville, 16 years. BJ Santos, from Murray Community Charter, 20 years of service. Sarah Schmidt, Teaching Assistant at Woodbrook, she's been with us for 15 years. Laura Scully, Teacher at Meriwether Lewis, 16 years of service. Lucille Shiflett, a Transportation Assistant, who's been with us for 19 years. Rita Taylor, a Custodian at Monticello, 23 years of service. Bonnie Thacker, Custodian at Western Albemarle, nine years of service. Cheryl Thomason, Teacher at Baker Butler, 30 years of service. Leann Via, Food Service Manager at Crozay, 30 years of service. Karen Worlick, Teacher, Sutherland Middle School, she's been teaching with us for 11 Kathy Warnock, Teaching Assistant at Brownsville, she's been with our school division for 19 Louise Weaver, Teacher at Monticello, 20 years of service. Jane Webb, Teacher at Henley Middle, who's been with us for 37 years. And you probably noticed as we went through that many of our Building Services people did not have their individual pictures up there. We will work on getting them and updating this, but we do want to recognize them here in our group picture from Building Services. They are not all leaving, don't worry. We would like to again congratulate each of our staff members who was recognized here today. We thank you for everything you have done for our students, and we wish you the very best in retirement. We will miss you. We hope you come back and visit and substitute and all of those things, and we wish we could have you here in person tonight and shake your hands and congratulate you. But I hope that this little virtual recognition will at least be a little token to let you all know how much we appreciate every single thing that you have done for Albemarle County Public Schools.
That was so heartwarming, Claire. You know, so many familiar faces and so many people that I've been lucky enough to meet over the last five years. I miss them.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I noted that at least eight of those people had direct contact with my child. I want to thank them for everything they've done and apologize if we're the reason you're leaving, but God bless, good luck. I'd like to read you a quote sent in the midst of the darkness around the social isolation isolation and fears forced upon us by the coronavirus and the spread of COVID-19 illness. Art is as natural as sunshine and vital to our nourishment. We're a small slice of artwork created by local schoolchildren. This notice was sent to the residents of Hospice of the Piedmont. In the midst of COVID-19, Mindy Moran, our Lead Instructional Coach for the Arts, was the recipient of a request to share the joy of our students with hospice residents. Mindy reached out to art instructors across all of our schools and grade levels to ask for their help. Hundreds of students, as part of their curriculum in April, produced visual art expressions that were shared with hospice residents. The project was another powerful demonstration of using art to serve our community. Mindy says there was only one requirement, to bring a smile to a worried face. Mindy has a guest with her that I will ask her to introduce. I hope they will say a few words about this project, what they learned, and the impact it had upon them. And I understand Mindy also is arranging for some 1,800 pieces of art for our community exhibits at Stonefield that was interrupted by COVID-19 to now be displayed in an online gallery. Please share that link with us when it is ready. This is Moran.
Hi, thank you. Can you all hear me? Oh, great. So I'm going to share my screen. Hey, my guests can start their videos. I have with me, thank you for that introduction, you've explained the project wonderfully. I have two of our art teachers, Rob Garland from Monticello High School and Kristi Lopez from Agnor Hurt. I had three teenagers at the start of this meeting, I think I might be down to two. Kate Burns, and is Peyton on here? I think, hopefully. So yeah, I'm just going to share my screen to share some of the art and let you see, let me see if this works. Screen share. Okay, can you all see it? And so, yeah, that's the exact description of the project, which was embraced by our entire art department. And those teachers who already didn't have their final weeks planned were able to integrate this project into their work. And so we got hundreds and hundreds of art pieces, kids sharing the things that brought them joy, in this case, this is an elementary student, picture of a dog, and others trying to share their messages and their feelings and how they're feeling here with the student. You can see a drawing. And then we have lots of photographs and things of their pets and things that brought them, that made them happy. Hundreds of images, these are a couple of Rob's art students. But I would like to pop, in fact, that's enough of me talking, actually. Peyton, if you're here, could you introduce yourself and share your work with us?
Hi, I'm Peyton Lewis. Can you all hear me? Is everything good?
I can hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for letting me speak tonight. So this project was super both fun for me and hopefully brought some joy to the community. I turned in a couple photographs, some of nature, and then this is a photograph I took in Quebec City in Canada. We were walking the street and came across this umbrella-lined street, and I love the people, and it kind of gives you a sense of like the fun that we're kind of missing out during this time, and maybe that the senior citizens in the nursing home can no longer partake in. So I chose this photograph to turn in, and hopefully it brings the community a little bit of joy, and I just think this is a really great project to both make, put a little more time into the work that we do create and have a bit more purpose to it. So yeah, really enjoyed it and just tried to choose images that brought me some joy, so hopefully they could bring others.
Thank you, Peyton. You can go get your pizza, whatever you were waiting on doing.
Thank you.
You're welcome, hon. And then hopefully go back. We also have from Western Albemarle, Kate Burns. This is her piece. Do you want to share?
Sure. So, you know, this was really something simple that I did for my ceramics class, and honestly, I don't think it's one of my best pieces, but it was something that really caused you to think about it, because I have the privilege, like I'm lucky to have both pairs of my grandparents here alive and not in assisted living. So, you know, it caused me to kind of think about what other people are going through. I've been quarantined with my family, so I'm always surrounded by people, but you can kind of imagine how lonely it must get for these people. And, you know, I just, you know, there's still a sense of community, I'm hoping, in these places, but stuff like this is difficult for them, especially because of their age and their susceptibility, so I just wanted to do something like that, you know?
Perfect. Thank you, Kate. You did a great job, and you can get back to the beach, which is where Kate is calling from.
Thank you.
Bye, hon. And finally, I wanted to ask Kristi Lopez to talk. Kristi is the art teacher at Agnor Hurt, and she worked with elementary, the entire elementary school kids, and they also made art. Kristi?
Thank you so much, Mindy. This project, to me, really was just such a natural project, because that's what young children do anyhow, is just share, share their joy with others through art. And so this is just an example, excuse me, of a very young artist that I had, that just the very simple "I love you" and how sweet that was, and just that they're able to share joy with others, and that's just something natural. I also think one of the greatest things for me in offering this to my students was the ability to give them something positive to do. I think that this time has been hard for a lot of our students, because it's very limiting time. So just being able to give them something that they felt empowered to be able to share with others and help others was very meaningful for me and for them. This is another example of work by an older student who obviously put a lot of thought into her message, and I just think that I was just so inspired by my students as they were doing the work.
Mindy, you're muted.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Donna. I just wanted to say thank you for having us, and the teachers did a fantastic job, it was a great partnership, and I think the kids got a lot of meaning out of reaching, a way to find meaning in this time. Thanks.
Just a question, when will this be put up? When will all the art be put up, do you think?
Oh, okay, sorry, just to be clear, I'm sorry, Catherine. This work was a separate, a bit, a chunk of art that we digitally uploaded and we shared with the Hospice of Piedmont, and they printed pieces on the back of a letter that went out to, I'm guessing, hundreds of residents. The other piece today was referring to at the beginning, was the Visual Arts Festival that was at Stonefield that got cut short. Rob Garland, who's also on the call, hi, Rob. During the pandemic, went and shot hundreds, 1,500, 1,800 shots, and put it onto an online gallery that is already up, and I can share the link with you however it needs to be shared. So does that make sense? Was that your question?
Right, that would be great.
Okay.
She's got the link.
Yes. Anything else? Thank you, guys. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Mindy. Thank you for having us.
Mr. Chair, it has been pointed out to me that yet again, I have screwed up. Appointed the administrators for our school system, but we did not appoint a single teacher, which we might want to do. So at this time, I would like to move that we appoint the teachers as employees for the 2020, 2021 year school year, as we were provided the information at the close meeting.
Do we have a second? A motion and a second, any discussion?
I'm sorry, moron.
Ms. Johnston.
Mr. Ober. Ms. Lee.
Yes.
Ms. Osborne.
Yes.
Mr. Page.
Yes.
Ms. Carlson.
Dr. Acop.
Yes.
And Mr. Alcarro.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Ober. The motion passes, and thank you, everybody.
I apologize to all our teachers who not have had jobs next year. Really sorry.
Okay, next up is announcements. Dr. Haas.
So we just have a few announcements. First, I'd like for Jay Thomas has a quick announcement about graduations.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, School Board. We are excited to announce that at 7:00 PM on Sunday evening, this evening, or in three nights this weekend, excuse me, we will be officially releasing our graduation videos from our four high schools. So the schools will be sending out an announcement to their families and the graduates, letting them know that will go live at 7:00 PM on Sunday evening. I've had a chance to skim through all the videos, and they look absolutely wonderful, and the pictures that were taken of the kids that we're sending to them were absolutely just beautiful. And the principals did a wonderful job in their schools, putting in a lot of hours to make this as special as possible for the kids. They got a lot of wonderful feedback from the families. So on behalf of everybody, thank you all for allowing them to do that, and we're excited to get that up on the websites on Sunday at 7:00.
Thank you, Jay, and I think that is the only announcement that we have.
Okay, thank you very much. On the School Board, Ms. Lee, do you want to have an announcement, make an announcement?
Oh, sure. I just would like to discuss the SROs during other business.
Good, thank you. Are there any other announcements from the School Board? Okay.
Donna, I'd just like to take a moment of personal privilege, that one of my, one of the kids who's children from a different parent graduated, and I'm just going to give my love to Claire, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Ober. Next up is Superintendent and School Board Business.
Dr. Haas. Thank you, Mr. Alcarro. I just have two items on that. The first one is from Dr. Diggs. So, uh, thank you, Mr. Alcarro. I just have two, two items on that. The first one is from, uh, Dr. Diggs.
Good evening. I, um, just wanted to let you know, this is a quick, quick update, that we have the technology in place at this point that for next school year, we'll be pushing a link, a direct link to our anti racism policy to all of our student and staff laptop desktops. So there'll be an icon right there on the desktop to it. They can link directly at to it. So that's the technologies in place for that to roll out.
Thank you, Dr. Diggs.
Thank you.
And I have, uh, one more item of superintendent's business, and that's from, uh, Ms. Collins.
Uh, good evening. I'm Danny Collins, Deputy Superintendent. I wanted to provide you with a brief update on the work of the return to school task force. As you recall, the purpose of the task force is to provide a guidance document for Almar County schools as we move to reopen. Four work groups, healthy students, healthy staff, healthy environment and healthy learning comprising, comprising of approximately eighty. Almar County Public School Educators and Staff completed their work late last week. The return to school task force has now reviewed, compiled and completed the first draft. The first draft has been sent to advisory groups, parents, special education, students, health, et cetera, and our leadership teams who will be reviewing and providing feedback in the next several days. Next Thursday, as part of our COVID update, we will present the document to you for review. After your discussion, we will use the feedback we've received to complete the process. We look forward to presenting to it, uh, the document to you next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. That, that's all, Mr. Alcarro.
Thank you, Dr. Haas. Uh, is there any business from a member of the school board? Okay. Uh, I just have, um, to compliment what Ms. Lee was just talking about. I just have a, a very brief, uh, item to read. And that is, in the last few days, we've received feedback from concerned citizens about the issue of school resource officers, SROs, in Almar County Public School Buildings. We've read almost every letter and email and are sensitive to the concerns of our students, parents and community members on this topic. Personally, I apologize to, to any of you who I haven't responded to yet. Uh, I'm, I've read just about everything and I, I intend to get back to you. The SRO program will be discussed as a non-agenda item in this evening's school board meeting with follow-up discussions in board meetings over the next two weeks. A thorough independent review of the program may be formally requested by the school board during this timeframe. We will then dedicate a school board work session to the evaluation of the SRO program to just, to determine what further steps, uh, may need to be taken or necessary. Next up is tackling the student stress dilemma. Uh, progress updates. Dr. McLaughlin.
Good evening, board members. I'm Pat McLaughlin, Chief of Strategic Planning for the School Division. And I'm here tonight with Jay Thomas, our Director of Secondary Education, to update you on the progress we've made toward elevating our high school experience. In May of last year, we presented the board with the rationale for why we thought change was necessary in our high school experience. Tonight, we'll recap that presentation for you, provide some updated metrics, and then update you on our progress. As you may recall from our presentation last year, national trends in teen mental health tell a troubling story. Incidents of major depressive episodes characterized as suffering from a depressed mood for two weeks or more and a loss of interest in everyday activities rose to seventeen point three percent among girls and five point seven percent among boys in two thousand fourteen. The increase in minors requiring hospitalization for eating disorders rose a hundred and seventy-two percent between two thousand three and two thousand fourteen. And twenty-five percent of teens met the criteria for an anxiety disorder and eight percent of children ages seven to sixteen had attempted self injury. We know that when students have high stress levels, that often results, uh, in such, uh, symptoms as poor physical health, substance misuse and abuse, academic misconduct and maladaptive behaviors. And we know that there's some stressors that are out of our immediate control, such as new parenting styles. We used to have concerns about helicopter parents. New recent research has classified an even more intense parenting approach. The snow pal parent, who paves the way for their child's success by removing all obstacles in a child's path. The college admissions process is a major source of stress for our students. More students are applying to more schools. While only nine percent of students applied to seven or more schools in nineteen ninety, by two thousand sixteen, that number had risen to twenty-nine percent. The effect of this new student approach to college admissions is that the most selective schools become even more selective. Finally, in the recent past, teenagers had few options for staying in touch with their friends once they left school for the day. This lack of connectivity created a mental break from both school and social life in the evenings and on weekends. With the advent of cell phones, however, students are constantly connected to friends through various social media platforms and technologies. That mental break enjoyed by previous generations of teenagers is long gone. A great deal of good can come with this constant connection, but it also has a dark side. Cyberbullying, eating disorders, depression, anxiety, all of these can be exacerbated by social media use. And while those factors may be outside of our control, maybe largely outside the control of our school system, there are opportunities to help mitigate student stress and ACPS has been very forward thinking in this area. Just a few examples of this from our division include the implementation of full-time elementary school counselors at every one of our elementary schools, increased middle school support counselors, an expansion of the STEP program to reduce out of school suspensions, and the implementation of an anonymous reporting app. I think our research partners at EAB summed this whole thing up nicely when they say that students in a relentless pursuit of perfection, concerned about getting the highest grades in the toughest possible classes to get admitted to the most selective colleges, have little interest in learning on their own, learning or their own growth beyond building the perfect college resume. We've done quite a bit of our own research on this topic over the past few years. In two thousand eighteen, our weighted, in our weighted grade survey, we saw that forty-nine percent of our respondents indicated that weighted grades led to increases in student stress levels. Sixty-eight percent told us that weighting grades motivated students to take as many AP courses as possible. Fifty-four percent told us that weighting grades discourage students from taking unweighted elective courses that were of interest to them. And seventy percent reported that weighting grades gave them a better chance to get into college. In the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year, we implemented our division homework policy. At the end of that year, even with the policy in place, we still saw sixty-eight percent of our students indicating that they worry about the, uh, that they worry about the amount they worry, excuse me, about schoolwork has increased. Seventy-two percent reported a decrease in the amount of sleep that they get. Sixty-six indicated they have less time to do things other than school. And sixty-four percent reported a decreased amount of time to spend with family and friends. We asked similar questions to them at the end of last year, and while some of the results were moving in the right direction, we were still not where we wanted to be. Our program evaluation that was completed a couple of years ago on the advanced placement program indicated that AP classes were a significant source of stress for our students. When we had some community conversation around our high school program, we asked the community, how many AP courses did you think students needed to prove student, were needed to things, to prove students could do rigorous college level work? The overwhelming answer, eighty-seven percent of respondents said between zero and six. The reality with AP, however, tells a very different story. In the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year, we had two hundred and fifty-three juniors who were taking three or more AP classes and fifty-four of those juniors were taking five or more that year. Three hundred and fifty-nine seniors were taking three or more AP classes and of those, a hundred and fifty-eight were taking five or more. You can see our, uh, most recent numbers from the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year, and things really haven't changed much over the past couple of years. One of our strategic priorities has been for students to identify and pursue their personal interests in our school. Students tell us that our practice of weighting grades for honors and AP classes discourages them from taking non-weighted elective classes. One way in which this manifests it, in which this manifests itself is through our study hall enrollment. In the eight, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year, forty-two percent of high school students were enrolled in a study hall. This year, that number rose to forty-seven percent. We believe that this shows not only that students are shying away from unweighted elective classes, but also that students need time away from academic pressures. We shared our data on a, on a high school faculty listening tour at the start of two thousand nineteen, and we received very positive feedback about some ideas that we had. And with our strategic priorities in mind, we identified multiple practices that are currently in place in our division that may be barriers to the attainment of these priorities. It is our duty as a school system to take action to eliminate such barriers when they become apparent to us. So last year, we came to the board with several recommendations. The first recommendation we made to the board last May was a closer monitoring of our division homework policy. The process of implementing our policy is ongoing, and we know we'll be successful with the homework policy when we see an increased percentage of our students reporting that teachers adhere to the policy, when we see students reporting adequate time for sleep and non-school activities, and when we see students reporting manageable stress levels. A second strategy that we presented to the board was the elimination of weighted grades so that students could choose courses based on interests instead of based on competition. Our anticipated impacts for this strategy include a reduction in study hall enrollment and an increase in students reporting that they're enrolling in class based on personal interests instead of competition. A third strategy we brought to the board was to reduce the academic course load for high school students from eight academic periods a year to seven and to implement a school-wide enrichment program. Successful metrics for this strategy would include a reduction in study hall enrollment and a reported decrease in student stress levels. And finally, we advocated for implementing a limit to the number of AP courses students could take during their four years of high school. Our original, our original recommendation was that ninth graders do not enroll in AP courses. Tenth graders have a limit of one course per year, eleventh graders, two courses per year, and twelfth graders, three courses per year. What we would hope to see from this strategy, uh, include, I'm sorry, uh, an increase in students reporting course choice based on personal interests, reported reduction in stress levels and a reported increase in time for activities outside of our school. Jay Thomas, our Director of Secondary Education, has been leading much of this work to implement these strategies. And I'd like to turn things over to Jay at this time to give you an update on how we have moved this year, uh, toward these strategies and how far we have moved this year toward implementing these strategies. Jay?
Thank you, Patrick. Uh, good evening again, uh, board members. Uh, so we just wanted to update you with where do things stand? What, so since we presented this a year ago to now, uh, where are we essentially? Um, as Patrick went through, we have, they have had the implementation of the homework policy and have done, uh, several sessions with folks, uh, working on the adherence to that policy. Uh, we just communicated, uh, within the last couple of weeks, the, uh, to our, um, uh, students who just finished sixth grade, the elimination of weighted grades when they start high school. Uh, we just completed our first year of our new learning management system, which is Schoology. And our, our high schools, um, this past year, for the first time, were in a common AB schedule rotation in the schools. Uh, next year, what are we looking to do? Um, we were hoping at the end of this year in the spring, we were going to have some community conversations set up at all of our middle schools as well as at our high schools for our staffs. Um, obviously that was, uh, placed on hold due to, due to the COVID outbreak. Um, but we plan on doing that, uh, early in the spring and going back out to discuss the different areas that we just talked about and continuing to get more feedback on that. Uh, we wanted to continually review the homework policy, um, and, and make sure we're getting the impact that we're looking for with that policy. Uh, and in addition, uh, we have a new, uh, policy on grading that's going to be coming to you guys for first read in July. It's going through the equity, uh, audit review. Uh, um, as we speak, we're, we're working through that process and, and we'll have that in front of you guys at the July, I believe, ninth meeting, uh, for first read. Um, and then what are our, uh, plans for the future, uh, the possible implementation of the AP cap and possible possible implementation of the seven academic classes with that enrichment period. So as far as the weighted grades, uh, we, as I said, that we just communicated that out in May. A communication went out to all at the time, sixth grade families and students. Uh, they are the acts to the rising seventh graders. It's the graduating class of two thousand twenty-six. So those students, when they begin high school, they will not have any, any of their classes being weighted. And what that means is we weight classes on a four point O or a five point O scale. Uh, several years ago, Dr. Haas and several of us went to the, to the state, uh, Department of Education and got permission to unweight the classes that are mandatory by the state of Virginia to be weighted. We got permission to unweight those. So everything will be an equal four point O weight. And with the numbers that Patrick showed you in the study halls earlier, we're hoping to, to see more kids actually take classes of interest to them. What we hear consistently from the colleges, we want you to take the highest level courses, but also be well-rounded and take classes that show your interest and passion outside of the highest level classes. Kids have felt hamstrung to do that because they're not weighted, uh, at a five point O, uh, level. With everything being weighted to four point O, uh, we, we see that more kids will want to take elective classes of their interest since they'll all be weighted equally. Uh, the next thing, uh, we're talking, continue talking about is the, uh, seven, uh, classes instead of eight. Right now, kids take four classes on A day, four more classes on B day. Um, and what we're looking to do is, is do four and three, but on that day that there's three, there would be a fourth class. They'd still have four, but that fourth one would be an, an, uh, enrichment period that all students would take. Uh, so for instance, in ninth grade, that's actually where you would see the freshman seminar. So the seminar wouldn't be one of the seven, as it's currently one of the eighth, it would actually go into that enrichment period. So this is again, one of the things that we want to have communications about with our stakeholders within the spring, uh, early spring as we go out and have, uh, community inputs and continue talking about the benefit of that and what that may look like. Um, and the last thing that we wanted to talk about is the AP. So when we went around talking about the, uh, AP course, courses being limited, uh, we actually got a lot of good feedback, um, as, as Patrick showed. Uh, most people or, you know, families felt at the time, zero to six, as we've continued to get some, um, feedback and look at some data and try to find that sweet spot. Our current recommendation is actually to go zero, two, three, four. Um, so total of nine. So, um, just finding out, is that the, the right, um, area to kind of hit on? Would we take these all at once? Uh, or I mean, could you take them at any time? Would they be in the order that we put zero, two, three, four? Colleges like to see that each year, if you're going to take high level courses, that you take equal or a higher number than next year. So that was the recommendation and why you see it be progressively more than, than one each year. Um, so with that, that's, that's not only, uh, the presentation from last year, but the updates on what we've accomplished this year. And just wanted to pause to see if you had any questions for Patrick or myself.
Any questions?
Jay, how are you addressing the question we got, uh, the comment we got from a student? And I think we had a few parents about, uh, rigorous academic programming for the very advanced kids. So the kids that it's not a problem to do five APs in a year. It's not stressing them out.
So one of the things you'll see in the AP, uh, or the EAB report is when they talk about APs, if you're going to limit, they say you have to have a firm limit for anybody and everybody. Because once you allow somebody to, um, surpass that limit, then it disadvantages everyone else when they're applying to the same colleges from that school. What we have is we also have dual enrollment classes, which in Almar County, we say to every school that applies on the sheet that the counselors send, that our AP and our dual enrollment are equally the highest level courses we offer. We have not capped our dual enrollment. We have not gotten any feedback from the dual enrollment classes, that they've been stressful. The kids have been taking too many of them. And it's also a guaranteed transcript. They are taken through the local community college and it's a guaranteed transcript when they leave our school. So taking the dual enrollment offerings would be one way to be able to do that.
Thank you.
Sure, absolutely.
Would either of you gentlemen, uh, please expand a little bit on the, uh, on the enrichment period? I understand what you said, Mr. Thomas, about it being, you know, similar to the freshman seminar in concept and just going in, in different levels. I'm, I'm somewhat intrigued by what the common, what, what you're envisioning. The, the, uh, the, the, the in common education, uh, in classes like that would be for entire grade levels.
Sure, absolutely. So one, one of the things, and Patrick can jump in as well, is our kids take eight academic classes a year. So that's, uh, eight, sixteen, twenty-four, thirty-two opportunities just in high school. Many of them also take classes in the summer for high school credit or even pre-high school as they're coming up. So they have way more than the twenty-five, twenty-six credits they need to actually graduate from high school. Um, so in addition to that, in our high schools, in those four classes, we're also currently doing a lot of, uh, intervention, enrichment opportunities and things like that that are built in during the day. And we're trying to cram those in on a daily, um, on a daily basis. So having that time built in for, uh, every child to be able to have an enrichment period every other day is really what we're looking for. Specifically, what would it look like? That's something that if, if we decide, uh, to go, uh, finalize and go on to the seven. That's something that if, if we decide to go finalize and go on to the seven with the enrichment period. We'd actually work with teachers and, and students and families to start building out exactly what that would look like. So that there's options in there and that, that we'd be able to benefit all of our students during that time.
Jay, I have one additional question. You mentioned on their monitoring adherence to the homework policy. So how do you plan on? How do you plan on doing that?
So one of the things we've been doing is surveys each year and kind of getting feedback from the students. We were actually in the process of doing one in the spring, but again, with the, the COVID and then. Changing and having so many other communications going out to families and surveys, we actually delayed doing the homework survey at the end of the year. We, we meet as a leadership team with our administrators once a month as well. We've spent some time talking to them and helping them analyze their data. I actually know Patrick this year at, at Western Abmar, that was actually one of the school improvement goals. Was working with his staff and them analyzing it as a school. So there's a lot of different ways that we do that, but really helping. Get the information that the principals need so we can support them within the school of working with their teachers to make sure that. They, they are adhering to that policy. Is, is that what you were looking for Katrina? Does that help answer that?
Yeah, it does. Thank you. And just so you know, I, I'm in agreement with homework policy. I. Probably an outdated study, but when I was a teacher, I remember reading that, you know, homework is, is not that effective. It actually can, in math, it can reinforce incorrect. Problem solving strategies and it's more reflective of someone's home life and the stability they have in their home, whether or not they consistently are doing their homework. Because it's parents pestering kids to get it done in a lot of the cases.
You know, and, and as a parent this year, I, you guys know I have triplets that just finished sixth grade and I thought. The teachers at Southern did an absolutely wonderful job across the board with all three of the kids with the policy. So I think we are starting to see a positive impact with that. I thought the homework was healthy and, and it was within the, the right amount and, and. It was meaningful for the kids more importantly.
Other questions or comments?
And this isn't, it's sort of related. How young are? How young do students get homework routinely? Do we have our kindergartners or first graders with homework? When do they start getting it?
Jay, would you like for me to speak to that?
Sure, absolutely. Yes.
We, the homework we assign for young children is reading every night. So that can be, you can, if you're reading already, you can read a book. It's 20 minutes. If you're not reading yet, having an adult or someone else read to you or listening to audio books. So that's typically the homework we assign for the first two years is, is more experiential. More life lesson kinds of homework. So lots of choice for students, but it is based on. Beginning to try to think about healthy study habits.
Thank you.
Hey Jay, I've got, I've got a question from the peanut gallery, i.e. my daughter. I'm getting taxed here, but. It's a fair question. I mean, she. She's, she's asking. How, how, how limiting the number of classes to seven encourages people to take? More. You know. Electives that they're.
Electives. Yep. And it, yep. Great question. We've actually got that question several times. So. The unwating of the grades absolutely 100% does that, right? I mean. So that's what we've heard from kid after kid. And we actually had some students go with us. To the state department of education that said, I would have taken more elective classes that I could have taken for free in high school. If I, if it wasn't weighted, if it didn't penalize me for my overall GPA. So that part of, of one of the recommendations we made is definitely going to encourage more kids to take elective classes. We think the building out of the academy process that we presented to you guys, I believe that was like right before we went out on, on, on online learning. For the year and talking about how we're trying to build opportunities for kids to take classes in area of not just interest, but aptitude. We think that will increase opportunities for kids to take electives. So we think as you're doing that and you put in both of those things, you're going to, to start seeing the kids that are. Just like I just ran that data and Patrick put it in there that 47% of our kids took a study hall last year. That was just one study hall. I also have the data on how many kids took two study halls. So the more study halls they're taking kind of offset that. So the seven of eight could possibly, you know. Have, have some kids making some choices, but I think the other choices we made with the, the, the academies and trying to. To offer some more opportunities is really all about the electives. And, and the unwating of grades is really all about kids taking more classes of interest, which are your electives. We think will outweigh that and there'll be more opportunities for kids and then we'll see more kids in the elective classes. But that is, that is a question we have gotten with some of the seven and eight to be fair, David.
I appreciate it. I mean, the, the only issue is that. The timing of the two things are different. I'm totally in favor of getting the way, getting rid of the weighted grades. I, I've been in favor of that for a very long time.
Sure.
I think the disincentive of taking art and drama and all those sorts of things is. Antithetical to what we're supposed to do. But the, the reduction, I'm not saying I'm opposed to reducing the number of, number of classes. I'm just thinking. That in combination, some of the kids are going to go to seven classes, but still have weighted grades, right?
Right. So some will, some will go to seven classes and still have, yes, as, as you transition, like our current sixth graders, when they're in ninth grade. Your 10, 11 and 12 will still have weighted grades. So it'll be a gradual phasing out of the weighted classes, but the sixth grade. So let's say, let's say a ninth grader, David, is, is in. Algebra two and a 12th grader is in algebra two. The 12th grader is going to get the weighted credit for the class, the ninth grader won't. But that'll be fair by grade level upon when they graduate. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, but what about the, when are we looking to, to go from eight to seven?
So that's on the, on one of the slides we put, we put future considerations. So. When we originally presented, we talked about doing these all together and with these roll in with those current. Kids that just graduated sixth grade or got promoted from sixth grade to seventh grade and do it as, is, is with that as well. We've actually got a lot of feedback from folks with the AP to actually start it sooner. And we, we got that across the board from families, but originally what we were talking about is really looking to, to roll that in with, with, with the same class. So these changes would come across naturally. But again, I think that's part of the, the community conversations, continue to get input about that and then be able to bring that back to you all. And, and have some discussion about that is what our, what our plan is.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Jay, have you surveyed students to see what electives they would take? I mean, you could see this sort of changing the demand for different kinds of classes and different.
Yeah, we do that every year as far as the, 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 the process of signing up for classes. So for instance, I know this year at like Abmar High School, for instance, Dara actually had all his teachers do these wonderful videos that they ran and. The kids could see the classes that were offered and go back and watch it later. They all have fairs in their class or in the, in the school. Where the different elective teachers come out and kind of promote their subject areas and, and so the kids have an opportunity to really understand, what, what is Lit magazine? I've heard about it. I've got a friend that's in it, but what is it really? And again, I really think the academy model that we're kind of talking about of, of having different pathways. It's really the pathways for kids to be able to, to choose, which. Gosh, I started eight, nine years ago with, with the arts and letters pathways at Abmar High School. And we saw that the kids really liked taking that continuity of learning of experiences and something they were interested in. So our data right now is all based upon getting the feedback of what kids are registering for and what they're not registering for. And, and we've been having conversations when we've been taking a look at the career clusters with our students. Of what they would be interested in. And we do have the data on that. I, I actually, that's some of the data that we used when we came and met with you guys about those different pathways. We showed what kids said they might be interested in.
Okay, I have a question about college admission. How will the unweighted grades? Be. Communicated that we are doing that. How would that be communicated to colleges, especially out of state?
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, sir.
So Mr. Page, one of the, one of the inclusions in the board packet tonight was a report we had commissioned by EAB that asked just that question. You know, we wanted to, before we made any decisions around this, we wanted to make sure we were doing no harm to students in the college admissions process. And so the admissions officers or the report that where they polled some admissions officers. Did say that, that they didn't believe that eliminating weighted grades or capping an AP program. Would have any impact on college admissions for our kids. Now, what we do need to do is every year we create a school profile statement. That we send out from each high school to our colleges. And within that profile statement, we outline what our most rigorous instructional program looks like. And as Jay was mentioning earlier, right now that lists things such as AP courses and dual enrollment courses. As some of our most rigorous, we also include in that that we encourage students to have work-based learning experiences and internships and things like that. So, so all colleges, whether they're in-state or outstate, out of state, have access to that school profile. And use that in the course of those decisions.
Okay, thanks.
I would just add one thing that, one of the things you said, Patrick, just kind of helped me remember something. That several years ago, we embarked on. A change that at the time was, was sort of controversial in that we eliminated class ranking. At that time, as you can imagine, in our schools, there was quite a bit of concern about that, that. Somehow would impact our, our students enrollment in colleges that they wanted to attend. And it, what we found was that it, it actually increased the chances of students getting into. Select colleges because instead of looking immediately at where the child was ranked among their, their classmates, they looked at the program. They looked at the classes that the student took, the interests that they had. They went to that to see how it would help balance out their, their college community. And I do remember at that time, there was a lot of feedback to, to not make that change. And we made it and that was one that was in alignment with the type of work that we're doing now. I think that what we find over time is that the good things that make Alamo County schools. A, a good school system, the, the high quality teaching and learning that takes place. Are the most important things that we're well respected for. And so the other changes that we make only enhance those things. The colleges still look to us for students of high caliber and, and high interest. And they also know that we're being progressive in encouraging students to pursue their interests.
You know, I, I would just like to thank both of you for redoing this particular session. Now that I, I realize that I was, I'm, if you were doing this last May, I was out that week for a family emergency. And I, I had no attention paid to what was going on. So to see this again is, is, or see it for the first time, I think it's great for our two newer. Members, but it sure has been worthwhile for me. And it answers a lot of questions that I've had and I truly, truly appreciate it. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions or discussion points? Okay, thank you very much.
You're still muted, John.
John, I think we lost your microphone. Next up, and I think Dr. McLaughlin, that this is you again, is the survey and optional calendar for the return to school plan. For, for the fall. Yes, thank you, Mr. Alcarro. I'm back again. Pat McLaughlin, chief of strategic planning. And one, my second item tonight is to provide the board with potential additional calendar options for the 2020, 2021 school year. So as we progress through the COVID-19 crisis, our return to school plan for the fall is starting to come into better focus. One option for starting school next year that we would like the board to consider is a later school year start date than we have traditionally had for our students. Included in your board packet are two draft calendars, each with a start date in early September. We see a number of potential benefits to a delayed start to the school year. We'll be sharing the results of our COVID-19 closure survey with you at next week's meeting. But one of the common threads in the responses we have received from instructional staff. Is a desire for more professional development if we anticipate any portion of next school year moving to an online format. We're also starting to receive state guidance on what types of supplies and protocols would need to be in place for the students' return to school. In a September start date would allow additional time for both of these. Starting in September would not be without its drawbacks, however, and one of those includes extending the time that our students must wait before they can return to a school setting. So tonight, we present the board with two draft calendars, one with a start date of September 2nd and one with a start date of September 8th. Each version of the calendar ends our school year on June 18th, 2021. Maintains our traditional break times and does not increase contractual obligations of our staff. A September 2nd start date would have a start school on, when, on a Wednesday, as we have done in the past. And allow for a long Labor Day weekend after our first three days. A start date on the 8th would have a starting the Tuesday following Labor Day. So tonight, with the approval of the board, we would plan to launch a community survey about the new proposed calendars tomorrow. Similar to our calendar surveys in the past, our survey would gauge satisfaction with each of the drafts. As well as the degree to which our community feels we should have commonality with Charlottesville city schools. In addition, we will ask the community about their perception of the benefits of a later start date. We will bring preliminary results to the board next week at the June 18th meeting. And would request board action by June 26th, 26th at the latest, but earlier if possible, perhaps even as early as next week. The board will ultimately decide, be deciding between three options. Our original calendar with a start date in August or one of the September start date options. I believe our community will be eager to have a firm start date to our, for our return to school. And so those are the highlights of the updated 2020, 2021 calendars. And I'd be happy to take any questions that the board may have.
Questions or comments on this? And I think the, the, the purpose of this evening is to. Give or, or not give approval to move forward with the survey and get that launched tomorrow. So we can start collecting data from our families.
Correct.
I move that we instruct the staff to move forward with the survey to determine an appropriate start date.
I second the motion.
Do we have any discussion? Ms. Johnston. And Ms. Lee, we just, we just made a motion and seconded it to move forward with the. Survey going out tomorrow to families to talk about the calendar options.
Thank you. So Ms. Lee? Yes? Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes. The motion passes. Dr. McLaughlin, I think you've got the, the go ahead.
Thank you, board members. I look forward to bringing you the results at next Thursday's meeting.
Okay, I do have one question that probably answered when you asked for questions, but. What method do you think we could use to get data material from people who do not have easy access to the internet? I think that could be a problem to make sure that we get the best result. To have some type of method in place for those people who don't have internet access right now.
I agree with you, Mr. Page, and I don't have a firm answer for that, but I can work with our communications team about some strategies perhaps to mitigate that. Over the course of the next week and provide.
I think I have an answer, actually. I, I don't, let's not forget, we just finished. We finished a school closure program where we had a pretty robust check and connect program. And we do know who the students are that do not have internet access. So we could just simply ask staff to contact those families to see what they think. We know it's under 5% of our student population, which would be in the neighborhood of, of under, or, or fewer than 700 students. So I'm glad you brought that up, Graham. This is a unique opportunity to make a direct connection with families and say. What do you think? We, we, we already heard from you that you don't have reliable internet access. So we're giving you a call to, to ask what you think. It would be like getting a, a phone call for an election, you know, a polling question. So. I'm glad you brought that up. This is a chance to do something different.
Just, I'm sorry, Patrick, one more question. You asked about how people felt about it being aligned with city schools.
Yes.
City school, have they set their calendar?
We, they said, we set a joint calendar with the city back in January and we've been in touch with our calendar committee liaisons there. To make sure we're being very transparent about our process and we've invited them to, to consider a later start date as well. We haven't heard that they are, they're interested in moving at this time. And so that'll be one of the things that we want to bring back to the board as well.
The, the city staff are using our items from our feedback survey. And they're sending out a feedback. and they're sending out a feedback survey to their community similar to ours. And, and part of that, they're going to be asking about their, their return to school program. And we'll, it, it remains to be seen if they do ask about calendar options, but they are aware of the work that we're doing and have been part of the, the calendar committees.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. McLaughlin. Next up are the second and third quarter financial reports for 2019, 2020. And I see that Mr. Zimmerman is with us and Ms. Schmidt is with us. Who we, who am I turning this over to?
I believe that you're turning it over to me.
Mr. Zimmerman, nice to see you.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Jackson Zimmerman, the School Finance Officer. I'm here to present for the board's consideration the second and third quarter financial reports. The second quarter report was prepared in anticipation of the canceled March 21st school board meeting. And it was using data that was prepared prior to the pandemic closure effects. So the data that is contained within that second quarter financial report in terms of expenditures and revenues received is accurate. However, the projections that were in the second report have been superseded by the, the third quarter financial report, which is presented for your consideration. So because the third quarter is much more timely and, and contains information that is truly relevant to the current situation, I'm going to focus the report on the third quarter financial report at this point in time. Let's see if I can share. Screen. As part of the third quarter, I want to start off with the general takeaway of, of the third quarter in preparation for the year end. We do anticipate the school division finishing in a strong financial position. It will not be as strong as we were anticipating in the second quarter. We do anticipate that we will end the year with a usable, available fund balance in the $2 million range. However, that is somewhat variable due to a variety of circumstances that we'll discuss. But the, the core takeaway is, from the financial perspective, we are in, we anticipate being in good financial condition at the end of the fiscal year. As of the third quarter, our overall enrollment is about 181 students, more than we originally budgeted for. So more kids came to school this year than we originally anticipated. Typically, when you get more kids, the state sends us more money. This year, we anticipate being quite different. We do not, we anticipate revenues actually declining from what was originally budgeted for a variety of reasons. We'll go through and look at those individually. In terms of the local schools revenue, we anticipate that declining about $395,000. That's due to a variety of circumstances. Building rental is a significant component. We will not be collecting that rental, rental March through the end of the year. Spring sports is another aspect. And donations is a, is a third aspect. We do receive a lot of donations at the end of a fiscal year. The next area is state revenues. If you remember, the, the legislature has passed a budget that was based upon projections that took place before the pandemic, and they declined to update their revenue forecasts. What this means is any changes in sales tax or lottery fund monies are borne 100% by the locality. Also, when you look at lottery and sales tax, collections on lottery and sales tax are delayed by two months. We will only receive April's sales tax revenues this month. So while we anticipate declines in these areas, we have no idea what they really are going to decline. So right now, the projections are based upon a, a 20% decline in sales tax revenues. But we don't, the state has not been forthcoming with any information regarding these kinds of declines. Overall, we do anticipate just over $1.6 million reduction in state revenues. And the final area of revenues is our local transfer. The money's coming in from local government. We did receive information from local government that this transfer is anticipated to decline by almost $2.7 million. This is, reflects their best take on how the pandemic economic conditions will impact local revenues. That's our share of the decline in local revenues. On the expense side, we do have some reductions to show in this area. If you look at our overall expenditures, compensation, salaries and benefits, they represent more than 85% of the total dollars expended by the school division. Again, not atypical for school divisions. We're a very personnel-intensive industry. The economic conditions associated with COVID, we did not reduce staff. We maintained our staff and kept them working throughout the, this, this, this condition. We don't have very substantial savings associated with comp and bends. The biggest savings was due to the, due to the health insurance, the good performance that we had on our health insurance. If you remember, the board acted upon not raising our health insurance rates in January. That resulted in savings for us for the year. So the largest save, largest portion of our compensation savings has been in that area. In terms of operational dollars, as soon as we entered into an economic downturn, staff did instruct departments and schools to begin limit spending in the final quarter of the year. And we have seen that limited spending will result in us about a $1.6 million reduction in overall operational expenses. In total, when we take a look at our $4.7 million in declining revenues and $4.6 million in savings associated with expenditures, we're going to finish the year very, very close to what originally budgeted. I'm going to skip through all of the details. The details are there if anyone has any questions or wishes to ask any questions regarding them. But we're just going to take a quick look at the final year end, what we anticipate our fund balance being at the end of the year. We started off this year with a $4.5 million fund balance. We used almost $1.2 million in our current year budget. We do anticipate returning building rental fees to schools. Schools that incurred expenses associated with building rentals should receive those monies back. And once we look at our overall savings that we have, we do anticipate using a little bit more of our fund balance than we had originally budgeted, $146,000. That leaves us with about $2.1 million in available fund balance to start off next fiscal year. Again, this is based upon some very preliminary, potentially highly variable numbers in terms of revenues. We don't know what sales tax is going to be like. We don't know what, what lottery monies are going to be like. So there could be some variability in this number, but this is our best estimate at this point. And we do think that it is, it's, it's as good as you're going to get with the data that we have available. And if the board has any questions, I would be more than happy to entertain whatever questions, and hopefully I can give you a good response with the information that I have available to me.
Questions for Mr. Zimmerman? Mr. Zimmerman, for us to come in with still $2.1 million in fund balance going into next year would be very impressive. And, and so with, with, with all that could go wrong and did go wrong, you know, the, 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 the work that you and your team did is, is, is very impressive. And I hope you're right, and it's only 20% down. You know, we're keeping our fingers crossed on that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Don't jinx this, John.
These numbers could be highly variable, so I have to leave that caveat.
I understand.
Thank you. And I ask the board to receive the second and third quarter financial reports.
I move that we receive the second and third quarter financial reports.
Second?
We have a motion to receive them. We've received the second and third quarter financial reports. We have a second. Any additional discussion? Ms. Johnston?
Ms. Osborne? Mr. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes. The mo, the motion passes, Mr. Zimmerman. You, we have received them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our last item in, is the school board salary, public hearing and approval. Ms. Johnston, do we have anybody who wants to speak on this issue?
No.
Okay. So, and, and, and just refresh me, Ms. Johnston, have we, we filed the advertisement at this point?
Yes, it was in the paper for two weeks straight.
Okay, good. So then I, I guess we are not going to be receiving a salary increase in, in tradition, in keeping with the tradition of getting the same salary increase as classified staff. And so I think that can close that issue.
You just need to make a motion to set the salary, whatever it is for the current year.
Who would like to make that motion?
Who knows what it is?
I move that we keep the salary level for the school board consistent with what it was last year and not provide any raises as, as, as we had done with classifieds.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second of, of motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Johnston?
I just want to say, I think it was an artful motion.
Thank you, Dave. Keep us all on.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes. The motion passes. Next up is other business. And before we start with this, I would like to propose taking a, a short break. And if, if, if everybody else wants to keep going, I will, I will take my camera off and, and take a short break. It's currently 8:34. I would say let's, let's start at, at 8:45.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for going.
I apologize in advance for my background image. I don't know how to change it, but I'm going to turn my video off.
Judy and Kate, I know that both of you had had an interest in kicking off this session. You talked about that and and decided who is going to do that?
Oh, I'm happy to go whenever.
You can go first, Judy. I mean.
Okay.
Okay.
I I don't care. I mean, I think I think we're all pretty close to the same page on.
Yeah, I think we're all on. Yeah, okay.
Nobody's closer than Graham Page.
Thank you, Dave.
Or Paige Graham, as we sometimes.
I know, I know.
As we sometimes like to call him.
Which is the name of one of my dear friends in high school.
Like a palindrome. Not quite.
Yeah. So I make that mistake every now and then.
Yes.
Okay, I think we're just waiting on Ellen and and then we'll kick off. There she is. Okay, you know, I I think we can do this without the others. They can come in and go out as they please. We, you know, it was described by Judy during announcements, and then I tried to complement what what was said there. And I Judy is going to kick off this conversation. We have all the time we need to to speak on it and and see what we want next steps to be. So, Ms. Lee?
Thank you very much, Jana. First, I want to thank every person who has written in and those who spoke tonight and the calls that I've gotten. All the parents, students, recent graduates, teachers and community members really showed up to let us know that you too have our student safety in your heart, and I thank you deeply for that. To let everyone know overwhelmingly, the comments we've received demand removing SROs from our schools, and I want to echo that. I support removing the police presence from our schools. I believe the studies upon studies that show that they don't in fact increase safety, and I believe our Black brothers and sisters, some of whom have been risking their lives in the streets for weeks to protest the generations of trauma from overpolicing and brutality. And if we are to be an anti-racist institution, we need to hear them. How can being faced with the embodiment of that trauma every day make for a safe and positive learning environment? I don't believe it does. And when I've asked questions about it in our division, I've been assured that there are infrequent arrests made in our schools, which is great. But it leads me to ask them, why are we spending $256,000 on them each year? Why do we have them at all? When our children return to school this fall, whatever that looks like, all experts agree that mental health will be a key issue even more so than in past years. And we face harsh budget realities from this pandemic. And so I urge us to find a solution that provides for an actually safe learning environment for all of our students, all of them, including our Black and Brown students, that removes this daily presence and funds mental health. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lee. I just haven't evidently forgot how to use the button when I was on break. Thank you very much, and thank you for sharing your thoughts. Dr. Acuff, did you want to follow that?
It's hard to follow that, isn't it? This is a subject that we have looked into for the past couple of years and and I have long been a proponent of increasing our mental health infrastructure, as my colleagues know. And I think with any program, including the SROs, even though we haven't had the list of horribles at our schools that many other school divisions have said, I can't ignore the fact that the mere presence of having police force in our schools is traumatic for some kids. The overarching goals of the agreement that was proposed, we the revision, I mean, the goals, I think, are important for us to think about. It's this is the goals that were written into the proposed new MOU to promote a positive and supportive school climate and to create and maintain a safe and secure school environment. And I think when we're thinking about those two issues, we need to look broadly, not just how is a C SRO program made better? How can we look at all of the various tools that we have as a school division? And how should we deploy those resources? And I have tried to work to make this this agreement much better, but I have to say that I am particularly given the extraordinary mental health issues and trauma of the school disruption added to the clear the protests and the clear issues with policing that it might be a good time to totally, it is a good time to totally rethink how we are providing for our students.
Thank you. Anybody else want to jump in?
Yeah, I would like to say something.
Please.
Basically, I fully agree with Judy and Kate. I know we had talked about the SROs before, and we were working on an interview that that said they weren't actually supposed to be there for for to enforce school discipline and only for emergencies. And I guess beyond the points that that Judy and Kate brought up, I I I need to make clear that the statement that that the the school division released is is not indicative of of how I feel about the SOR or the SRO officers. I I don't think we need to be providing them with additional training. I read some studies on what constitutes a good SRO officers and even SRO off SRO. It's a little hard to back them. Even SROs themselves said that often their job is is social work, is relationship building, is being a parent-type figure to these students. And I would argue that that money would be better spent getting those actual type of mental health counselors and social workers into our school as opposed to providing training to police officers, because the police are still there. If there's if there's an emergency, you can call a police officer to the school. You don't need to have them actively in your school patrolling. And so yeah, I don't know. You guys said it so well. I don't I don't feel like there's much more I need to say other than I I I think this is a really good opportunity to revisit and think of this with new eyes. SROs, I think, started becoming more prevalent in schools after school shootings, and and they've been there for many years now. And now there's a lot of research that we can look at and and draw upon. And I think from from my limited digging into it, it hasn't shown that it increases school security for the students. Students don't feel safer when they have SRO officers in their school, at least not every category of student. And then the last point, which which perhaps doesn't tie into this, but it's something that's worth mentioning, is I I I do agree that we should revisit Confederate flag. I mean, at this point, NASCAR NASCAR has banned the Confederate flag. And and just to speak personally, when I I posted that on my Facebook and I said it made me happy. And and the reason it made me happy, my husband works with NASCAR and I just there's there's like a relief, like a weight lifted off my shoulder to think, wow, all these people that he worked with that in my my head, I had thought that they were that they probably didn't like people like me. Those people are willing to take a stand and say this is the right thing to do. And so since our our superintendent has put that policy into place, it's it's been a year and and it's a different climate, and I'm not saying what we did, I'm not even looking at the past. People are allowed to change their minds, are allowed to to grow, and we're in a growing situation. I think it's it's worth revisiting a difficult conversation. And I'm really excited about revisiting the SROs, and I do want to make extra clear that which is what the problem I have with that statement is that it was it's somewhat defensive saying, but our SROs are good people and and our schools are doing well. And it's not about being defensive. It's not about saying that our school resource officers are doing a bad job. They're not. What it's saying is that there's different ways to go about things. You can you can get you can accomplish goals in different ways. And perhaps I do think this is the time to really look at it and and ask ourselves why we're putting so much money into SROs when there's other areas that have shown it to be effective. There are school divisions that do not use SROs, and we can look to them for guidance. So thanks for listening.
Mr. Ober?
I'd rather let Graham go.
Okay, I'm sorry. Need to interrupt you.
All right. I realize that maybe the SRO program does need some amending. And I guess prior to when I heard Judy's statement, I was sort of in favor of maybe trying trying to have some type of survey of the program to find out whether or not there are some negative things with it. But after listening to what Judy said, I think we too should eliminate the program. But I think we should make sure that those funds that's no longer going to be used for the SROs probably should go in about three main things. First, like she mentioned, I'd want a lot of money for that to go into mental health for our students so that we could make sure that what happened with the COVID pandemic and what has happened in Minneapolis, that those programs, maybe our students won't be as affected as much that we can try to sort of make some amends to our students for those. And part of that would be having maybe more money being funded into our CRT training, maybe having some other additional personnel with CRT. And then that would sort of lead into the third thing, too. I'm not sure how we could do this. But even within our student body, trying to make sure that we have some method of trying to build better relate race relationships among the kids within our schools. When we could see what was happening to Mr. Floyd, that's something that maybe most of our minority citizens probably realized was a problem for maybe a long, long period of time. It might have been a wake-up call for a large segment of our population. But for a large segment of the minority population, it was just showing something that we knew existed all along. So I think if we could try to use some type of method of making sure that within our schools, we have better race race relationships, too. And that would probably lead to what Katrina is saying, maybe really voting to remove Confederate symbols to really back up what Matt had proposed last year to actually have a vote on that. So I would sort of go along with eliminating the SROs, but with the funds being used in some type of way for those other things.
Thank you. Ms. Osborne?
On a purely practical level, now that I've been through two budget cycles with the county school system in in one year, if you look at everything that we fund, there's data to support whether or not it works. And yet, if you look at this SRO program, there's nothing to say that it makes us any safer. And in fact, we've heard that it makes many kids not feel safer. So to me, it seems like an awful lot of money going to something that could be hurting some students and not even helping those others. So I I would favor putting the money into mental health professionals instead or some other type of thing that we knew was going to help everybody after coming through this six months of of COVID and all other sorts of drama that we faced in the last last few months.
Thank you. Mr. Ober?
You're right if I jump in for a point of clarification, because we're all.
Absolutely.
On the budget cycle, I am curious, because I think for the city, the way it works, and I could be wrong, is that it's it's like a pass-through budget, like they appropriate gives them money, but then they pay it back for the police officers. So I guess I'm curious, if we give up our SROs, we don't necessarily then have 264,000, whatever you said. I'm sorry, I don't know exactly your that we can then spend somewhere else. It's kind of just like they're just taking out a budget. So I do want to get clarification on on how that works.
And I and I agree with that. That's one of the things I want to bring up as as well.
That that was going to be my first question, where the funding comes from before we account for it and say, oh, let's do A B and C, to make sure the 246 is still there.
Oh, it's a. So the the funding that we provide for the school resource officers is a split between the county, local government and the school system. So it is actually an expenditure for us. It's a transfer.
So if that got cut, we have $246,000.
That unless, you know, of course, I'm I would double check back with Roslyn, but it is money that we contribute equally with them to fund each officer. So, for example, if we were going to add another school resource officer, it would require a commitment from the local government to add the staffing, half of the staffing for the school resource officer, and then we would need to take and add half of the staffing for the school resource officer. So we are, it's it's not transferred to us as funding for a school resource officer and then returned back to them. So it is funding that we we use instead of something else, instead of doing something else.
So it is not earmarked?
No.
Okay. Okay.
So just and just to clarify, if I could, one thing on on that point, Mr. Ober, is there's not a grant of any sort. That goes into paying for the officers.
No, I'm not aware of any grant.
So it's wide open.
There may have been at one time. I I mean, I think I can remember years ago, there there might have been some funding around it. With a grant, but not not now.
Okay. As he Jackson.
Pass the the quiz.
I go. Please. So I have to admit that when I moved to Virginia. The concept of an SRO was completely foreign to me. I just. I I think I don't think they existed anywhere in Alaska when I was a kid, but to the extent that they did, they certainly didn't exist in our town. And so I've always been sort of puzzled. Why we had them. I I I got into a fairly significant argument with some people. At Henley because some of the members of the PTO at Henley were very much advocating for a full time SRO. Representative at Henley and I. Was pretty skeptical as to why they would want that and why that was necessary. And I think there's some people who are still pretty irritated about that fact. But given what's taken place nationally. I think I've been muted again. Given what has taken place nationally. I I. I I I think it would be insensical not to be afraid. At some level. If I if I was a person of color, I I I just, I I. I mean, you can't unsee what you've seen. It's not just a history of four hundred years, but it's the history of two weeks ago. I I I I just don't know how we get I I I I'm having a very difficult time emotionally dealing with this. Because what what occurred was so, I mean, it was traumatic to me and I don't have any business being traumatized by it. And so I can't imagine what it will have done to some of our kids. I I I don't know the process for for defunding at this point. I don't know how we do that, but I I'm sure that that's something we can do. If we had a vote right now, I would say, yeah, I don't we have to have police officers in our. In our school and I'm welcome to be educated to why I'm wrong. Because like I said, this is. My default is to say, why do we have police officers in our schools? If I'm wrong, I I I'm. I welcome to be educated on that, but my gut instinct is that that's just not something that we need. And so I'd like us to, I'd like, I'd like, I'd like staff to to give us a recommendation, give us an analysis. And then I'd like us to have on the agenda. I'd like us to vote on it. I'd like and have an actual vote of whether we're going to do it or not. I'd also like. I really think we need an up or down vote on the Confederate flag. I I I think we, you know, I I appreciate everything that that. The Dr. Haas has done. I I think, you know, I think I, I think I think that the the the. The modifications we've done to the dress could have been very helpful, but. When the Marine Corps and NASCAR are saying that these are our hate symbols and they're not acceptable. I cannot conceive of the Fourth Circuit telling us we can't say that they're not allowed. I I just, I I said that I said that a year and a half ago. I didn't think that the, I really don't think the courts would. Would cite us against us on that. And I think after the past year, I'm I'm more firmly in that opinion. And I'd kind of like to make the Fourth Circuit rule against me on that. I I would take that, I would take that case to court. I would, I I I think I I feel comfortable losing that argument if I'm going to lose it, but that's, you know. That's my two cents.
Dr. Hans, I I would love to know your thoughts on this.
Let's see. So what I think is that, given the fact that. The school resource officer program has been in place for quite some time. I think that what we what what I would recommend is that. We we complete the MOU work that's being done right now so that we actually, and I'm not saying that. I wouldn't want to, I'm, I wouldn't bind the board by saying that it needs to be approved necessarily, just that we complete it because. It is a document that articulates all of the goals that we would have for such a program. And so that would give the board an opportunity to review what the program is supposed to be. At at this day and time. Read that document, which should be coming to fruition. Thanks to the cooperation of the county attorney's office and the work of Ross Holden, really take a look at it, study it. And based on that, we could have, we could have an independent auditor. Complete a a program evaluation to see. If that program in fact is is meeting the goals that have been articulated by the Alamo County School Board. And at that point, then, and it wouldn't, wouldn't have to take long to do that. At that point, you would have. You know, an independent review and concrete information on which. Basis on which to make decisions around continuing the program. And then also filling in the blanks for the pieces of the program that. But, you know, I know someone spoke earlier about, well, if we have a social media threat. For example, lots of times the school board receives an email from me after the fact that we've had a social media threat at. Ten thirty on a Wednesday night and. The police are heavily involved in. Tracking down where the threat came from and are able to. To work and deal with the student or or whatever individual made the threat. And to bring it to resolution. And oftentimes it is a student and it doesn't result in in an arrest. It results in. Getting the student the help they need and and help having the school system help them. So we, so for me, as a superintendent, I would need to figure out. If we're not going to have a school resource officers, how do we re-articulate another memorandum of understanding? With the Alamo County Police to continue a relationship that helps us bring those kinds of things to resolution. So I think. What I was thinking about this obviously a lot today and and receiving a lot of feedback along with you from. Members of the public and our and also a lot of graduates that that actually graduated from Alamo High School when I was principal there. So. While while I certainly had a lot of email and that was a little uncomfortable, it was really great to see my former students. Engaging in their civic responsibilities. I'm really proud of them. What I would say is let's let's put together, let's finish putting together that framing document, review it. I'm not in, you know, you don't have to sign it. You can read it and just look at it, see what the goals are, see what facets there are. Have it, have a study of the program. And then make a decision moving forward that's based on data and information. That you have in hand. We can also, you know, we do a lot of surveying. We can, we can also do some surveying of our own. To see what. You know, what the feedback we currently have on on the program is. That's, that's what I would do. For you so that you just have something to base your decision on.
Matt, do you have an understanding of how long that process would take?
No, not offhand, but I mean, we could certainly expedite it. I know we we have our own program, in-house program evaluation, but I think the board would probably be more comfortable with something, someone handling from outside. It it is an interesting point, though. You have, you have approved a budget that contributes. Half of the salaries of five county employees at this point. So I'm I'm not sure, quite sure how to untangle that if if an action were taken at this time.
It 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 might be a situation where we simply have to pay those salaries, but we relocate them outside.
You might have to, yeah, if if the board took an action. You would be committed to the salaries at this point.
Matt, you mentioned. Think that Matt's, I mean, I do think it's important. To look at the scope of responsibilities that the SROs do. I mean, all of us are uncomfortable with the issue of. General policing and, you know, discipline, and we really tried to write that out of it. But as Matt said, there's all sorts of other activities. So the issue shouldn't be as, for me, shouldn't be SROs or no. But how can we get all these various functions? Perhaps better arrayed in our school division.
And there's nothing so. It's it's difficult for me to weigh in. As I said in my email to the board, it's such a paradigm, you know, that. As long as I've been in school administration, there's been an SRO at the school. When I began as a teacher. We did not have school resource officers. I remember seeing police officers that would come to help with athletic events and things like that. So some of the things that. That school resource officer, resource officers do now were being done. In schools where I worked in Virginia Beach without a school resource officer program. So I I don't think the two things are, you know, it's it's not something that that has to be all or nothing. That's, that's what I think. And I think that there are ways to address the legitimate concerns. That I think students have, that parents have, that that families have during these times. And previously with the presence of of police officers in the schools, I think it's possible to. Throw away a lot of the, to use an analogy, to throw away a lot of bath water, but keep the baby intact in terms of the safety support. That we sometimes need. And to me, it's really about maintaining an open line of communication and relationships. With the with the police department. Four times when there is a a real safety emergency. Or or a potential threat to one of the schools. That's, that's the one thing I I just have in the back of my mind. But I think, you know, we could, I've already talked to some of the staff. We could turn around an evaluation, I think, as soon as we could. Identify someone to do it pretty, pretty quickly, I would think, because we have the MOU, which articulates so much.
Okay, Matt, you mentioned an independent independent order to to do that. How much would that cost?
I couldn't say offhand, Graham. I know several years ago, we did an independent audit for our school system. It was an efficiency study. And we had some, just a few staff, including retired Bill Boshier, who was retired superintendent. Who helped to do it. It didn't take them very long and we we still reap the rewards from the efficiency study. So I think. I I don't know, I I couldn't say offhand, Mr. Page.
Okay, well, yeah.
That's just my recommendation. I think it's always helpful to have. A little more information before making a making a decision like this. And, you know. I I just think that would be helpful.
Could we get any price quotes? To give us an idea of how much that would cost before we do it.
Yes.
Me, if it seems that the board is sort of really leaning toward eliminating the program. So to pay money to decide whether or not to eliminate it. Which would be eliminating some of the money that we could use for mental health or something else, to me, wouldn't be a very wise thing to do.
Well, in part with that.
It's a question, of course, just a question of 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 wisdom, I suppose. There's, there's sometimes you you spend money to prevent. Costs later, liability costs, other kinds of issues that could come up that could be. A lot more expensive than an expenditure to have a a study. Just to check off the final boxes before you make a a decision.
Okay, could that be? Like a independent group. Of individuals from the community that might be willing to do it as volunteers.
I would certainly have volunteers on a committee to to review it. Yeah.
Okay.
I I think. There's, there's, there's a sense of immediacy, but in grand terms, there's not.
Right, we're not in session as a school system right now, so.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Well, there's no school going on. There's no, the SROs are now assigned to other duties that we will not have. We have time to take a look at this. We we have time. There's no school. The the SROs are out doing other jobs for the police department. And they won't be reporting back to the schools if we do continue with this program until August. So I I feel like now, if you were to take a look at it, this would be the time to do it.
I'd like. Go ahead, Dave. You know, I I would just say that, and something I I I did not say in kind of the setup for this. Is that I feel very, very strongly that this should be a unanimous vote on the board. Because I think we need to speak with one voice in making in making the decision. And so, and I think there is a a a common thread through 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 everybody, you know, on this. And but there's part of it is to Dr. Haas's point, we're gonna, we've got to have a relationship with the police in some way. You know, we don't want to be. Straining ourselves from the, you know, as as I'm aware, that's happened in in other divisions. And I think we need to to, you know, perhaps go through the process that Matt is describing. Because if we were to make a fast. We can take a fast reaction to it and say, let's, let's, let's get out without saying what's next. So that, you know, then what? You know, I'd like to get this done before the end of the month. You know, the latest by the by the 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 meeting in July. But I'd like to have some more information so that we can really strategize in terms of where does the money go? You know, what do we do as opposed to saying, well, we're going to do that and and. And then we got to think of, well, boy, maybe we shouldn't have done that part. And I'd like to have that be a unanimous vote. I commit myself to that. And. And I think if we if we review whatever the documentation is. Which ideally, I mean, I'd love to have this done by the twenty sixth when we go through our second, our second phase of the retreat. And then we can really talk about that as part of the retreat and and figure out. What we're going to do with if we decide to go forward with two hundred and forty six sixty four, whatever it is, thousand dollars. Because in the big picture, that's not a ton of money to distribute out. If we put it into to mental health counselors. We'd probably get three. You know, which is better than what we have now. And so I'm not negating that.
If we. I I think we also need to make sure that. That money is, that money will actually exist, John. I mean, it.
Agreed, yeah.
I'm concerned, I'm concerned that we don't, we don't dedicate that money prior to actually knowing that.
Agreed. But to really think and work that through to term, make that determination. And if if it is available, if it's not, different issue. If it's, if it is. You know, what we would do with it. So I I think we're we're probably all on the same page. You know, it's it's just the, I guess, the process of doing it. And I'd like to get it done and voted on with speed, not haste, as I've said before.
And I know we've received several emails from people saying we should follow suit with what the city of Charlottesville is doing. And. I've I've read several news reports about it. And my understanding is that. They, in my discussions with with staff in the city, is they have an old MOU from two thousand and sixteen. is they have an old MOU from 2016 that hasn't been revised. And before they make a new MOU with the Charlottesville City Police, they're going to really hash it out and make decisions around it. So I'm not sure, I know what the headlines say, that they have abolished in some fashion, having school resource officers, but that's not what I'm reading in the fine print. That there's going to be some kind of a relationship. So I, the other thing that, that I would say is just, you know, I think that we would be doing essentially the same thing that, that the city is doing, which is real, before signing on, you know, signing on the signature line on, on the MOU that we've been working on, we would take a step back. I thought Ellen, you know, your comments earlier, I have to admit, it makes me cringe a little bit because everything we have in our funding request is, it, that's considered initiative or program, has metrics with it. And, you know, we, we do quarterly metrics on the proposals that we have. And that's one where we, we don't have articulated goals for the program in our funding request documents. And we don't have a way of ascertaining the, the effectiveness of the program. So I think that stepping back, looking at what we have in terms of an MOU, looking at what would be the goals for it. And the fact is that, I'm just going to say to you, in many ways, we don't have metrics for the program. Some of the metrics would be hard to prove. For example, we don't know how many times someone hasn't gone in and assaulted students at a school because they see the police car parked down there. We, we don't know that. We also don't know how many students have had a chilling effect on them, as I've heard at least one board member mention, in their learning, because when they get to school and the presence of the police officer frightens them or i- in other ways inhibits their learning. So I think it would just be helpful to look at the things that we do have metrics around. And some things we're just gonna have to infer, or you're, you know, I'm gonna have to help you infer, and, and you can infer. But I think we, at least, it at least deserves a, a little bit of study, just like the city is doing.
I, I, I guess I would like to echo that. I mean, the, the joint protocol draft outlines a whole array of goals and specific tasks or responsibilities. And I think what a lot of the letters and a lot of the, that I looked at were mostly concerned with the daily presence of police in the schools, the possibility that they would get entangled in discipline where they're not supposed to be, and those kinds of actions. But they also make sure the school building and, you know, facilities are safe. They, they deal with, you know, cyber bullying and, and issues like that and threats to the school. And for me, the issue is how do we, how do we get rid of the chilling impact that having a police presence in the schools may well have? But keep some of the functions that promote the security of the schools. And I don't know the answer to that, but I think that's how can we re, and, and I would say, and I disagree with Jono, I'm not interested in spending the money yet. I mean, until we figure out what the new relationship should be.
I am. And I'll just say one more thing, because I, you, you're making, I think, a great point, which is going through the tasks and the goals, it, it's also an opportunity for the board to look at the draft and say, well, so for these things, we, we, we probably need, we probably need Alamo County Police Department for these things over here. For these things, that maybe the daily presence in the school or a support system in the school or relationships in the school, we, we could use another kind of personnel for that. I was, um, I was listening to, I was watching CNN a few nights ago and, um, you know, there's a lot of conversations in cities around the country around simply defunding an entire police department. And I, and so the, a reporter was asking a young fellow that was part of a protest, you know, well, if you don't have a police department, then what, how will you respond when there's a 911 call? And the, the young fellow said, well, perhaps social workers would respond, or perhaps as someone that is, as a mental health expert could respond. Not every 911 call is the same. And oftentimes, we ask our police to do things that, that's not really the role of a police officer, and they're, they're maybe not eight, they don't have the training to do it or the professional background. So if we're looking at things around making students feel safe, I mean, safe for me in a school, safe means psychologically safe to be, to be part of a positive climate, feel good about yourself and be able to learn. Is, is that necessarily the role of, of, of a police officer? If you're looking at an MOU, the board could say, well, that's not something we're looking for. We're looking for these things. And then we, we could work with local government if, if there are still services that we need from the Alamo County Police Department, if the board determines that the MOU as we, as we've developed, it would not, would not stand moving forward. Then there's a way to contribute funding to the Alamo County Police to support the things that the board deems needed. And also you could, you could build metrics around those things. So that's, I'm, 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 don't want to, I'll step back. I, I just, I was invited into the conversation, so I'm sharing some of the thoughts that I have about it, because I'm like you, I, I've been thinking a lot about it. It's, you know, just like you. In fact, I'll mute myself.
I would just wanna, I would like some clarity around, I'm okay with taking time to, to look at the program. I don't think we need to decide right now. There's, there's no pressing reason. It, there's, students are not in school, other than letting people know what the board is feeling like, I, which I feel like we're doing a pretty adequate job with this discussion. I would like clarity around what giving the extra time would result in. Because I'm, I'm hearing that what we're gonna do is continue to explore that revising the current MOU. And what I want to make sure is part of that, which I think it is, based on what you just said, Matt. I want to get to how we can separate, because a lot of the jobs that we have written in this MOU do not need to be done by a police officer in the school. And so part of what needs to be done is, is figuring out how to put those with better equipped professionals to handle them. So is that what you anticipate? I also would love some clarity around the time, because I feel uncomfortable. And it doesn't, it could, it could just be minor, but I mean, I would like to get before kids get back in school.
Oh, so, so here's what I'm thinking, because I'm just kind of reflecting on, on what I said. I, I think what would be fair is for, for me to talk with the cabinet tomorrow morning in our meeting and just say, okay, so, because they're all, they're all listening right now. So I won't have to tell them what happened. So I can talk with them in the morning and just say, so what, what, with, with the understanding that right now, we're not in school, and we have about a month to work with, what could we accomplish for the board that would help them in their decision-making process? And then what we could do is come back, I realize next Thursday's meeting is a is, is a COVID meeting, but we can put an item on there just to update you on that and say, so this is, this is what we can do. This is, this is what we can do within the time amount that we have. And, um, and then at that point, the board can say, well, okay, that'll work for us. That'll give us a little more information that, that we need, or we also want you to do this. That way, it'll just, I think it would be more fair to the board and, and help you have a better understanding of what I think we could accomplish for you in helping you make a, make a decision. Because that's a fair question, you know. There's also, there is also, if, for me to say, well, we're not in school, so we have all the time in the world. I mean, that's not accurate either, because whatever decision the board makes, we would also need to build in whatever resources we need going into, going into the fall to provide staffing and supports for kids. So is that a, is that fair for me to come back to the next meeting and say, this is what we think we can do in terms of a study to help you, to help you? And then you, then you would have a little, like a list, or, or a proposal. And then you could say, well, that's fine, but we also want this. Or you could say, no, we're not even interested in that anymore. We're just gonna make a decision based on what we see in the MOU. Where, wherever is your pleasure.
Are you saying, are you saying you're just gonna look at the MOU, or are you gonna also let staff think about some ways of collecting data?
Yes.
Collecting data.
I'm gonna talk to the cabinet tomorrow about how we could possibly do a, a program review.
I I would, personally, I think there needs to be a survey. We are so survey-heavy. We give surveys about our calendars. We give. Um, and SROs and community, a part, part, part with getting emails is you don't know where the people are emailing from. And you have to have community support for your school's discipline system. And so I think this is definitely an area I would want to see a survey and see how parents, those kids are in the school, feel about, um, the officers.
And I, I would like to see how the kids feel about it.
Right.
I mean, I, I, and, and I don't know how we do that in a way that people feel safe to, you know, I, I, Jono and I talked about our respective kids. Yeah. Kendra is in a position that, that she's not gonna have the same issues that other kids could have. I can ask her. But I'd certainly like a safe place for people to respond. Do, do you know what? Does that make sense?
Yeah. And the thing, a point a board member made yesterday was that, you know, one of the things we need to be able to do is disaggregate the data. Because sometimes the majority voice, if, if you don't break it out, it, it can sound like a lot of overwhelming support for a program that really doesn't have the same meaning for, for that group that it does for traditionally marginalized communities. So just as we were talking earlier about, how do we reach the just under 800 students that don't have reliable internet, we would need to figure out how to reach out to all of our, all of our students. We, you know, the thing is, we had, actually had a really pretty good response rate from students on our, on our budget. And, um, so we would just need to figure that out. So we'll come back at the next meeting, next Thursday, and make, just say, this is, this is our proposal on how to do a, a study. And if, again, you, that gives you a more concrete picture of what we, we could, we can possibly do.
Do we have a consensus on this idea?
I'm happy with that idea. I, I am curious, does anyone feel the need? I guess the, the survey is a good way to have outreach, but I guess I'm worried about the statement we put out about SROs. I feel like in the face of of nationwide protesting and, and people tackling the issue, our only correspondence that we put out there is we have great SRO, uh, SROs. And we'll try to make them a little better, but they're pretty good as they are. And I'm worried about that. So, and maybe I'm the only one. So I guess, is there any way that, I think an important part of this is conveying that as a board, we are interested in figuring out ways to reduce police presence and, and shift it to people that might be more adequately, adequately equipped to handle what comes up in schools, which is often not arrestable crimes.
So what we do. One, one of the things there, Katrina, is that, that, that went out in Matt's name and my name. The, the board was not named in that, nor did, did anybody speak for the board.
So would we? I don't know that everybody understands that, though.
What I would, what I would offer is that, um, coming out of tonight's meeting, we could, we could do a release tomorrow. Just what, basically summarizing a lot of things you just said, Katrina, which are, you know, that the board had, had, I think, a pretty robust discussion around how do we take a closer look at the, the SRO program? And, um, if, you know, if you want to, if you want to send me a few bullet points that you want to make sure are articulated, and just send it to the whole board, I, I, we'd be happy to put out a release like that.
I don't want, in fact, I mean. The only one who speaks on it. I don't, I don't want to speak for the board. I don't, I just want to think, is this something that we should have, kind of, you know, this is what we, this is how we feel.
Yeah.
But I don't know.
That release also include maybe asking, even for the people who are listening tonight, asking those people if they know of any negative incidents involving our SORs within the county schools.
And if so, if they could.
Specific ones.
What?
Specific ones.
Specific, right. If they could give us any information about any incidents that they know within county schools. We received a whole lot of information about national surveys in the emails. But if we had something, as many people as possible who know of incidents within the county, if they could let us know about those specific incidents.
I would support putting out that, that release tomorrow along the lines of what Katrina's talking about.
We'll.
And Graham.
I'll, so in the cabinet meeting tomorrow morning, we'll talk about it. We'll get, we'll ask Mr. Jeremy to work on it, and we'll see to it that the board sees, sees it before it goes out.
And sorry to chip in, I just, this problem with doing group statements is that never, not everyone, you know, is gonna agree with every little point. For me, it's, I am curious about if there's been specific incidents, but I, I don't want to get across that we're trying to target our SROs and, and, and say, it's not about that. It's about reevaluating the system based on the information that we have. And it's not just about specific incidents, because even if there isn't a specific incident, just having them in the school causes issues. And so, um, I'm really, I don't want to put something out that's, that's targeting someone, although I'm, please let us know if there's, there's things that we know about, but just want to put that in.
Right. But maybe the reason I've, I said that is almost 100% of those emails were noting incidents of things very negative that had happened. And I wanted to know whether or not there are incidents of those things within our county. You know, and I'm not saying that we are trying to throw blame on the SO, SROs at all. I'm just saying that if you do know of incidents like this, to please let us know.
Okay, yeah, that, that works.
The lack of those incidents.
Whether or not there have been incidents, it seems to me that with every program that we have, from time to time, we should do a program evaluation. You know, it may vary in depth. But my focus is, these are the, I think the goals in this document are great. And the issue for me is who is best prepared and qualified to do them? And how do we address what we know is an adverse reaction to police officers? Fair, whether it's fair or not, but is this the, is this without disparaging any of the individuals that I've come to know on the SRO team? Is this really what we want to have in our schools? How, how do we accomplish these goals with a different set of characters?
Mr. Oberg?
I just wanted to say that the, the lack of incidents doesn't indicate that there's not a problem. But I'd like to know if there are specific incidents. One of the best emails we got was from a student who said, yeah, I just want to let you know. And I don't know if she sent it to everybody. It might have just been to me. Well, somebody, one of, one of the former students emailed me and said, look, you know, this bothered me. I was afraid of, I was afraid of the SRO in my, in my, in my school. I mean, that, that's, that's, to me, that's a really important, relevant thing. And irrespective of whether there was a specific incident, that personal testimony is, to me, a lot more effective than a study from such and such university saying things. It just speaks, it speaks more to me. So if people have those specific things to say, hey, look, I went to, you know, Western Ever High School in 2015, and this happened to me, or this is how it impacted me. I, I would like to hear it.
I agree with everything that you said. And also, I, I wonder if there's a way that we can listen to this feedback in a way that's not a survey, in a way that's not as cold and impersonal. I think this can be an extremely personal issue. And, you know, and I know that there was some consternation over closing our public comment as a matter of course. And I know that those rules have been in place as long as we've had these online meetings. But I, I wonder if there's a way for us to invite more personal comment on this. I, I don't know what that is. comment on this. I, I'm, I don't know what that is. I, I just wanna throw that out there cuz I feel like we, um, I, I just wanna know more from people and I want them to see that I'm listening and, you know, and just invite that kind of thing.
I wonder if we could set up a, uh, instead of having a school board meeting, which has, you know, it just has dynamic restrictions on it. If, you know, we, a few years ago, two years ago, and my brain is gone at this point, guys, but uh, Jono and I went to places and did a listening tour. I know Kate and Katrina went and did a listening tour. I think Jono and Graham did. We could do that virtually. We could say, you know, you know, Jono and I, or Jono or somebody are gonna have a Zoom. This is the thing. If you would like to talk, show up. And then we're not bound by any, as long as there are only two of us, we're not bound by any of the, the regulations and policies and procedures. And we could just give people the opportunity to, to share with us.
I like that idea a lot.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a very good idea, Dave, and, and, uh, there are just some, some technological things that have to get figured on that, but I think that's very, very doable. Okay, everybody, are we, are we set for the night? Is there anything else we need to talk about?
Love you guys.
Can I get a, a list for my own clarity of what, what we're doing? Like, what's the next step?
I think that's what he's, Matt's gonna put together for us.
Yeah, I'll, I'll tell you what, um, we'll talk about it in the cabinet tomorrow and our, and make sure we all are on the same page and, and I'll put out a list to the board tomorrow.
And then we're gonna revisit this next week.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That sounds good.
Do we?
Okay, everybody.
This is a dumb question, John, but we had, Jono, but we had, did, did we do this meeting, uh, the COVID-19 meeting in pre-agenda already? Did we talk about that?
We have not.
Okay. So we'll, but we'll make sure it's on the agenda.
I thought we did.
No, we did.
Yeah.
We did it.
I don't, I don't recall, um.
So Jennifer, we'll just need to, I didn't remember.
Double check it.
Yeah, I just.
Yeah, Graham and I would have been the ones on the board.
Yeah, but we did do it.
We did it at the last pre-agenda meeting.
That's what, yeah, I just.
Was that the, on Tuesday?
Yes.
Yes.
Matt, as part of.
It's so long ago.
As part of the work, uh, for tomorrow would drafting a statement that more closely aligns with the board's perspective, can that be part of the work for us to review?
Yes.
Thank you.
This, this is off top, but I just wanna tell you guys, I love seeing you. I'm just seeing you in person.
Good seeing you. It's, this is a good group. I'm proud to be part of this board. Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night, everyone.
Yeah.
Good night.
We, we are adjourned.
Good night, John.
Good night.
Good night.